Just thank you, everybody, for coming. This is our first of two scheduled workshops for our comprehensive plan update review. And for the most part, I'm going to turn this over to Catherine Hartley. She's our consultant with Benish, formerly.
Tindell Oliver.
Tindell Oliver, thank you. So with that, this should just, I think, up, no, down? Down, down, up, and there is a pointer. Although, actually, yeah, if you need a point for something, we'll use this here because it'll show up on the screen, so.
And then, I guess, hold on one second.
I'm ready.
I'm sorry. So Catherine's going to walk through the presentation. When we get to, like, a particular element, then we'll kind of stop and start discussion, and we'll continue to work our way through, so.
Okay. Hi, everybody. How are you?
Good.
It's been a long time since I was here last, many months. So we're just going to go through this real quick. And like Renee said, when we get to an element, we'll stop. And when you have questions about the strikeout and underline, we'll stop and answer questions there, and then we'll go to the next, go to the next element. Okay, so here's our agenda for tonight. We'll go through the summary of all the public outreach that we have done, which has been significant. And the elements we're going to cover tonight are future land use, transportation, housing, coastal, which used to be coastal and conservation, but it's been broken out into two elements, and then recreation and open space. And then, like I said, we'll get to the other elements next week. So the major changes, this has just been a major cleanup of your plan because it hasn't gotten a major update since 2008. So we cleaned up a lot of language. A lot of it was left over from Florida statute before 2011. There's been major updates to Florida statute over the years. And so the biggest things that we have done, other than just clean up the regulatory language, we've updated all of your maps and data, although the utilities department helped us significantly. They did the, all the analysis because your water and sewer has been significantly upgraded over the years. So thanks to the utilities folks for doing that for us. So all of the maps, the data and analysis, 9J5 language refers to the Florida administrative code, which was repealed in 2011. So all of that language is now gone. There was a lot of stuff in your plan, especially the future land use element, that had what were actually land development code provisions in them. They should really go in your code because when they're in your comprehensive plan, you have no room to grant variances or take into account certain site. There's always something with a site plan that you have to, okay, this didn't quite work. If it's in your plan, you don't have that room to maneuver. So those things are going to get moved into your land development code. Again, any outdated policies, again, referencing old Florida statute and the Florida administrative code, we took those out. Things that you've completed, those have come out. For instance, when we get to your water sewer, you've had a major revamping of those things and now have your own water supply. We'll get to that next week. Things like roads, projects that you've completed, those were all taken out. Throughout your plan, there were multiple policies that were repetitive and referred back to each other, so we cleaned that up so that it's only referenced once. And things were reorganized based on the topic, so basically it's goals, objectives, and then the policies. And sometimes the policies didn't quite go with the objective that they were under, so those got moved around. And by the way, the staff did a great job with the table that they gave you. They organized that for you. We did the strikeout and underline, and they put it in a table format for you so that you could see how that was tracked. And then lastly, we included the, the community input. So we had a lot of public engagement. We met with all the boards. Staff did a couple of extra community engagement with different neighborhoods. I believe Union, was it Union Academy was one? And then what was the other neighborhood you all met with on this?
Tarpon Cove.
Yeah, I think it was Tarpon Cove, yeah.
Or Mary Village.
Mary, yeah.
And then we met separately with the folks that worked on your strategic plan. They were like a guiding committee when we were doing all those meetings. And then, of course, the public at large. And so some of the things that were, that the real major themes that came out of that outreach. One of the biggest things was, hey, we want, we love community gardens, and we want to see more of that. And so those were added to your single-family districts because they weren't permitted, and why wouldn't you have those things? There was great support for different neighborhood plans and specific plans, so US-19 actually was, was a major one to focus on that corridor. There was certainly support for updating your code, but that's a next step. Once this is adopted, you have 12 months to update your code pursuant to Florida statute, so that will be done. There was support for both retaining mobile homes and making sure that that still is an affordable housing supply, but also coming up with a plan for replacement when that time may come. Attainable housing is certainly an issue statewide, no doubt. There's just such a shortage of housing across Tampa Bay, and prices keep going up. And you're, you know, the folks that make lower than the average, the median income in the region are having the hardest time. So support for that was important. EV charging was a thing that came up. Of course, we're trying to move to electric. And then greater standards for your environmental review for, for projects. That was, oh, I'm sure you know the projects we're talking about. Completing your sidewalk, sidewalk network came up the most in the transportation. That was a huge topic. Your network is pretty good. We're going to show you that in one of the maps, but completing that network was important. Safety came up multiple times, as well as adding bike lanes and trails throughout the city. Another thing that came up for those bike ped improvements was specifically to connect to the beaches and also downtown and proximity to schools. When we get to schools, I should note that one of the things that we pointed out to folks was that there is an opportunity with the Florida Department of Transportation to apply for grants that has that, those connections to school. I think it's a two-mile radius, so think about that in the future. Some of the facilities that came up as important during the recreation under that topic, restrooms, fountains, you know, parks in general, adding parks, trails, kayak launches, those, those all came up. And then lastly, under the conservation and coastal management, improving your habitat quality and quantity, adding new parks and conservation land, new programs, those came up. Those aren't necessarily a comprehensive plan issue, but we did want to share that with you. Increasing your tree canopy, that's really important. We're going to show you the heat island map in a minute. And then restoring the existing preservation that you do have. So we broke down for the community workshops, we tried to break it down into context areas, basically, and give folks a chance to say specific things about each of those areas. So to, oh, I don't have my glasses on. So to sum up the residential comments, so we broke those out by residential and commercial. Accessory dwelling units came up as important, adding townhomes, basically what we call missing middle housing. So it's basically anything from two to generally 12 units on one parcel. And that's certainly an efficient, more efficient use of land. A duplex is a paired villa. Sometimes that's the public hearing.
The modern person.
Term for duplexes, for some reason, the term duplex has a negative connotation to it, but you can see throughout the region how they don't necessarily have to be what people think that means. Three-story apartment buildings, that certainly came up. And then under the commercial, particularly because of the expense of opening a brick and mortar shop, having, like, opportunities for pop-up retail, that came up, and that's a good idea. You get to test your market and then perhaps move into a brick, brick and mortar store. Corner stores, that certainly came up multiple times, and you can see the color coding. Small but print grocery stores, like a more urban, I'm sure you've seen some of the more urban publics is certainly in the region. We have a lot of those in Tampa, actually. Commercial shopping centers, those came up, although less important. Accessory commercials, that was kind of a new term that we introduced to you all. So being able to add a small commercial use to maybe already residential use is a nice opportunity. Again, it allows the person to test the market before going into an independent commercial space. Mixed-use buildings, that certainly came up as important, too. Okay, so this is one of the boards that we presented at your workshops, and you can see in red, those are your current sidewalk connections. You can see that they're pretty good, although there are opportunities to fill those in. And we've shown where your schools are, where your parks are, and you can see those connections. Can everybody see that map okay? Do you need a minute to take a look at it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Let me know when you're ready. Okay. So let me get through these comments, and then we'll stop and do the strikeout and underline, and then I'm going to go sit in front of my computer so I can follow along. Again, filling the sidewalk gaps were really important. Crosswalks, that certainly came up a lot, too, and that goes along with safety, the overall safety comment. Adding bike lanes and trails, especially being able to connect to the Penn Ellis Trail, that came up under transportation. There were a lot of suggestions for transit stops and connections, and again, to the parks and the beaches, those came up as important. And then a shuttle and a circulator were also mentioned.
I think you've got more on this before you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I forgot I rearranged the slides.
Yeah.
So these were the infill development types that we showed the public. And so you can see that second from the top where we call it the paired villa, that's actually a duplex that's a couple of blocks from where I live. And it turned out beautifully. It fit in with the historic Ebor City context. You can't from the street, like, I had to really angle up to get that backed up story. If you're standing right in the street, you don't know it's a three-story building. It just looks like one of the shotgun homes that are typical in the neighborhood. Something that folks really liked was the cottage court idea, so it's still single-family, but you get a multifamily number in there. And sometimes that fits in better with the context of your neighborhood. And again, townhomes came up. I think that's an example from here. We took that picture here. And then another missing middle housing example is the bottom center. And then your typical garden apartment, but a mid-rise version of that. I think that was probably the least popular of the things that we showed. And here's some examples of the things I talked about a minute ago. There's the pop-up commercial, which can be as minimal as somebody riding a bike around and selling stuff. And then the accessory commercial is the second to the right there. Corner store, doesn't have to be very big. It could be just convenience things, but maybe a design that fits into the neighborhood. Live-work opportunities certainly came up as important. And then there's your small footprint grocery store, three-story mixed-use, and then a conventional shopping center. Okay, so here's the, some of the, the highlights of the data updates we did. Your 2021 population is a little over 25,000. One of the things that's required by Florida statute is projecting your population out. The state runs those numbers for us so that we don't have to do the crazy calculations I had to do in grad school. I hated those spreadsheets. They were awful. So it's only till 2040. It's only, you know, it's less than a 6,000-person, you know, increase. I realize that probably sounds a lot to you. It's not so much because it's, it's 20 years out, almost 20 years out. Your functional population, and these were numbers that came from the water management district because they are in charge of doing water planning for you, and this was incorporated into your utilities element. So it includes the areas where you have utilities outside of the city limits where those connections were made. It includes tourist population, and then obviously your permanent population. The demand for new units is only 2,500, so maybe that makes you feel a little bit better about the almost 6,000 number. And we calculated that on what came up is already your average of 2.3 persons per household. You've got just residential, you've got 274 acres of vacant. And the good news is to the community, which I think gave folks some comfort at the workshops, was that you don't have to do a change to your future land use map to accommodate that. It's really more things that you desire, like missing middle housing, if you want to incorporate those. There's, so the Schimberg Center for Housing Studies at University of Florida projects out your needs for the different area meeting incomes, so the affordable housing. And you can see 63 for 30% AMI. The 30 to 50 is only 132 units. 50 to 80 is 110. And let's get to your sewer. Those were big questions that have come up, not only with this board, but everybody else. You have a ton of capacity, so you don't have to worry about that at all. Your capacity now is 4 million gallons per day, and you only need through 2040 1.9. You've got a ton of capacity. Don't worry about it. Same thing with your water. 6.4 million gallons a day is what you have capacity for now. Through 2040, you only need 3.15. Some of that is because people are using less water, obviously, than they, than they were a long time ago.
Before we go off of that, if you can flip back one, thank you. So just a, a little additive, so we have the future land use map theoretical units. It's about halfway down. So that's based on, when you run the math, on our existing density allowances and on the vacant land, or what we. But what's interesting is that, you know, a lot of that is currently underutilized. Includes not just vacant land, it includes underutilized parcels that have been historically developed at less than the density that's already, that's allowed there. So those things make it, you know, somewhat challenging, but things like accessory dwelling units come into play where, you know, in those, like, predominantly single-family areas where you can get some of those increases and meet some of that demand without trying to blow out your, you know, your land, your zoning, you know, in, in neighborhoods, so.
Does anybody have any questions so far? I know we're going kind of fast, so feel free to stop.
The population for 2021, what do you think we are right now?
I can actually look that up for you in just a minute. So.
Actually, I've got it real quickly.
The Florida Department of Revenue calculates that and posts them in October, between October and December. We can take.
Well, this is in 2006. We had 23,240 people, so that was 17 years ago, and 2040 would be 17 years forward, so that's quite a big jump. I just don't think that's a, I don't know how we're getting that many more people.
My gut told me that this number is low.
Really?
Our, hold on. I have our, our latest August of 2022 estimate from the Bureau of Population and Employment Projections for the city is, so your preliminary population estimate, and this is what they use for state revenue sharing for fiscal year 2023, 24, 25,752.
Wasn't far off.
300. Yeah, well, I mean, we're just, you know, we're not, we're not growing at leaps and bounds. Candidly, if, you know, if you look at the, you know, the, the 2007 timeframe, you know, when that comprehensive plan was last updated, you know, we, our projections were about what they, or we're now projecting for another 20 years. We're, we're just, you know, we're not growing rapidly, so, not compared to, you know, to Pasco and Hillsboro, so.
And the further out you go, once you get beyond 10 years, the reliability obviously decreases, and that has to be adjusted. Those, those numbers are adjusted every year by, by the University of Florida. The way they calculate it is births, deaths, in-migration, and out-migration. So perhaps that number seems low is because birth rates are going down, certainly.
I, I'm saying, I think the number seems high.
It's the, it's the mid-range, the way they project it out.
I'm looking this, at this in terms of what needs to be updated and will be need to be updated in their land development code. So for this particular set and these data updates, I'm looking at their concurrency management section, where it talks about the needs and capacity for new development as it relates to, like, water and sewer. So are we going to have to take these and then make sure that what we require in our concurrency management system matches this data, or is that not coming till later?
No, that comes, so the next step, once you adopt this, is to evaluate your zoning map and see how, if it meets your, now what your new future land, land use map is. When you get to concurrency, you've, as you can see, you've got so much capacity, don't even worry about it. Do you know what I mean?
Our bigger concern is getting flows to the water, you know, getting, getting things to flow to the plant, so the, the sort of, so it's our.
Yeah, the only reason I look at it and get concerned is because I see the numbers in here from, like, the 90s.
That, the land development code has not been updated in, probably since that was put in, so, yeah.
Okay.
So you said, getting the sewer.
So when a develop.
Facilities?
Yeah, we have areas of, of the city that don't have city sewer, that are still on septic. Or, you know, you may have, you may have, you know, a sewer line in an, in an area to serve an area, but if a new development comes in, those new flows can't be handled by the capacity of, of the, and we just, we have a lot of, when we get to the utilities element, we'll talk about this, but, and we just have a lot of, you know, we have a lot of aging infrastructure, so.
This is strictly your plant capacity.
Yeah.
Right? And so when a new development comes in, you may have to upgrade a lift station. You may have to increase your pipe size, and that's on the developer to do. So this is strictly your plant, which we're required to do under Florida statute. Then when you get to your code, you can worry about that other stuff. All right.
I was just a tad concerned with the, the usage, you know, the projected growth and the amount of available land. You know, you were talking about maybe 10 units per acre, but I'm glad that Ms. Vincent brought up the fact that there's a lot of recapacitating that can be done.
Right.
And revitalizing and reusing what we already have, so that was, that was.
And, and that's what, yeah, that's what we hear from the public, too, is they want that, you know, that's the way that we need to accommodate growth, as opposed to, you know, large swaths of land getting upzoned and stuff.
And annexed.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll get some through annexation as well, so.
So again, your current future land use map can accommodate your growth, but if you want to accommodate missing middle housing and those increased numbers, you, you, you may want to make those adjustments. And especially in your, on your zoning map particularly. Any more questions? Okay, we'll take a pause here, and I'm going to go sit in front of my computer so I can follow along. We're going to do the strikeout and underline of your future land use element.
And while she's moving, I do want to take the opportunity, I wanted to introduce Dan Lewis. He's from our office, and unable to be here next week, so he will be here in my stead. I just wanted to make sure that you had a familiar face and I had the opportunity to introduce him to you all.
Welcome.
Thank you all. Thank you.
It's always good to have an attorney in the room, right?
More than one is a concern.
I'm not an attorney, but I play one on TV. Okay, so we're going to get to your table here. Have you all had a chance to look at the table? Get on the mic.
And else, we can do this one of two ways. I'll kind of leave it to the board. We can either start with the clean Word document, or if you want to look at the table, that's the, the previous, the strike through and then the explanation. So I'm, you know, I'm not sure which is easiest to review at this point.
The annotated, actually, comments in the table may be easier for you to follow.
And while she's moving, I do want to take the opportunity, I wanted to introduce Dan Lewis. He's from our office. And I'm unable to be here next week, so he will be here in my stead. I just wanted to make sure that you had, um, a familiar face and I had the opportunity to introduce him to you all.
Welcome.
Thank you all. Thank you.
It's always good to have an attorney in the room, right?
More than one is a concern.
I'm not an attorney, but I play one on TV. Okay, so we're going to get to your table here. Have, have you all had a chance to look at the table?
Yes.
And else, we can do this one of two ways. I'll kind of leave it to the board. We can either start with the clean Word document or if you want to look at the table, that's the, the previous, the strike through and then the explanation. So I'm, you know, I'm not sure which is easiest to review at this point.
The annotated actually comments in the table may be easier for you to follow around simply because stuff was moved around. That might be
Okay, so she's got it up there already, so.
So again, you can see there's multiple comments in the, in the notes section where it says, "We simplified the language, cleaned it up and removed things that were no longer supported by the statute." Or things that were altered by the statute and you did have to update it. Policies that were moved to other elements, and you'll see that in those comments. And then taking things out that belong in your land development code and not necessarily your comprehensive plan.
So when we see a complete section striked, it's because it belongs somebody else or it just doesn't belong anymore?
Or it's just stricken. Right, and updated.
Is there a way for us to differentiate between it's gone to code or it's going for good?
There should, so there's notes here. Let me pull up the policy.
I think we're going to have to. Well, there's a few things that we also didn't talk about in the presentation. They had the place-based area map and the, the future land use map.
Oh, well, yeah, we'll get that. Now, do you want to do that?
Well, it's, I think it's pertinent to, I think, I think it'll be a little easier to Can you switch back, Ally, to the
We can always back.
These, there's a couple of major things that we did that
Here, let's go down and we'll show you.
Need to be discussed a little bit.
Here we go. Okay, so the staff came up with a really cool kind of place-based map that will guide any decisions that you have in the future, whether it's future land use or rezonings. And we'll show you that in the next slide. The countywide rules, which also governs your comprehensive plan. You guys are a little bit different than the rest of the state that you have an overarching, um, land use and transportation board, so to speak, and then countywide rules to follow. So you all have to update your plan too, and that was one of the, I call the three-legged stool of this, of this plan. So some of your future land use categories were collapsed and sort of put together based on what the countywide rule, uh, new categories are. You didn't have to do that, but it makes sense because you had so many categories. And we'll get to that in a second. We'll show you where those were put together. Um, and again, duplicative policies were removed and you should see those in the notes section. Again, things that should go in your LDC were just stricken. And then again, the 9J5 Florida Administrative Code Language was removed. So let's get to that cool map that Ally did. Here we go.
And if you, you want me to talk through this a little bit?
Sure. I can't see.
So, and Ally, I think you can point. So the, what we were trying to do here is to look at the city from the perspective of where are the areas that really are stable neighborhoods that realistically aren't going to change much and shouldn't? Where are the areas that we think are transitional? Where we're already seeing change happen or where we have conflicts between what development wants to go there versus what the land use maps allow? We wanted to recognize the existing special area plan with, with, for the downtown and the, you know, the smart code area. We wanted to recognize that there are, there are areas that are, with historical development, you know, traditional neighborhood, you know, urban patterns that we want to maintain and that provides that, those areas that are, you know, a little more livable, walkable, urban downtown feel. We wanted to certainly recognize the working waterfront areas and make sure that, you know, those were captured. And then we've got, you know, a couple of special designations. You know, there's a, there's a pink area up there that's the Stoffer Plant. That is restricted. That can only really be what it is. Out to the, to the east, we have a, a large area that's, you know, kind of, that's that agricultural residential estate type of, of area meshes with the unincorporated county. And then the, the, the other kind of large area, and we're, we're still working on this map. This is a work in progress. Um, we're, they're going to help us finish cleaning this up. It is aerial, the area that we called environmental reserve, that's the crosshatch area. And what that really is meant to capture are kind of the, the waterways, all of our existing preservation lands, areas that are going to, that we know are susceptible to sea level rise for the long haul. So we, you know, in areas that should the opportunity arise, if we can do an environmental lands acquisition, things that perhaps, you know, so it's, it's really, you know, an area to, you know, it, it, it may overlay some of these other areas, but it's really to kind of recognize those, you know, kind of that big swath of environmental lands along the river, the bayous and, and areas of that nature. So that, that, this map is still a work in progress. But what we, the intent of this for the long haul was to, you know, kind of map these areas, we're calling it a place-based area map. The, the boundaries between these areas kind of are meant to overlap. They're not hard and fast. It's not, it's not a map that should drive, you know, like, we're not recommending changes to the future land use map based on this right now. It's really more of a guide for the future. Ultimately, what we would like to do is, once we have a good set of goals, objectives and policies, anything that's place-based of a policy that we can tie back to one of these areas so that we know how to apply policies in the plan. Right now, you've got hundreds of policies and everything applies to everything and it's, it's really hard to, you know, to, to manage and interpret. So the long-term, you know, the intent with this is, hopefully this is a guiding map. It's, you know, and so that's how it's set up. This is, this is, this is really new for us. But, and so I'm interested in, in, in feedback along the way with this. The, I don't think we put the, uh, we didn't put the, the table in here, did, in the, in the presentation. I don't think we did.
No, it's in the strikeout.
But it's in, yeah, it's in the strike through, underline of what each of these Yeah, she might go to open it up, yeah. What each of the, the districts are and, you know, what, what their intent is. And so it's really, it's just, it's really that. It's kind of an intent map. So that's very new and you'll see some policies associated with that, you know, in the, in the plan. So that's, and this is a, you know, this table's not complete right now. You'll see the place-based objectives that I was talking about that will be filled in later from whatever, you know, where, wherever we land toward the end of this process is a way to just, you know, kind of have it in one place. Okay, so in that neighborhood suburban, which was most of that kind of light yellow color, you know, those are established areas. You know, they're, they're single family. There is some support for very moderate changes to that, maybe two-family, you know, accessory dwellings is where we start to get, capture some of that density that we need. But by and large, you know, large-scale changes probably not going to happen there. The neighborhood traditional is just that. It's, it's kind of that livable, walkable, urban downtown area. So anyway, I just, that, that's the intent behind that. And then if we want to switch to the, the two, the, the future land use
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. I do have a question. Are, are any of these place-based areas going to have any regulations that go along with them? Are they just kind of broader strokes?
Broader strokes.
For the policies?
Correct, correct. Yeah, that was the intent. You know, kind of a vision type of, of scenario. This is the, the future land use, the existing future land use categories as they're proposed to be consolidated. Do we have a cheat sheet for the consolidate, the map, the
The strike through?
Yeah, the
I have the strike through.
Okay.
Just opened the clean version just to show
Yeah, we need to see the strike through.
The next map actually kind of shows how those
Yeah, I wanted to show the affected areas map. Yeah, it's in the, it's in the presentation.
It's the next slide after the vision. Yeah, go up one.
So that's our current land use map. Sorry, Ally.
I'm sorry, it's very hard. I just can't
Yeah.
There we go.
So we talked about, that we wanted to, following the, the countywide plan, we wanted to consolidate some of our land use categories. The good example is the, you know, we had commercial general, we had residential office of retail. We had, um, some other really mixed-use kind of commercial areas. Under the countywide plan rules, that's all retail and services now. So we've made the same migration or recommended to make the same migration, keeping our densities where they, where they were. We didn't increase anything. So, um, that took quite a bit of, of, kind of, word, you know, ground truthing to make sure that we, that we weren't inadvertently increasing densities. So that was, that was, that's one of the major changes. The other one was kind of the migration of what used to be the intentional, excuse me, the institutional future land use map category to public, semi-public. And then the, we wanted to create and kind of reestablish the working waterfront land use categories that have just kind of been somewhat lost over time. And, you know, our old records reflect them with mapping and things like that. So trying to reestablish those, that working waterfront and industrial waterfront areas to make sure that those are captured and, and the uniqueness of those is captured. So, so what you're seeing here, these are the areas that are actually affected by these either name changes or consolidation. And you, unfortunately, there's some of that gray is unincorporated county, so that's might be a little misleading. That whole north side of the Anclit River is not changing.
Yeah, the gray, the gray is unincorporated.
Gray is unincorporated, yeah, so. I didn't know we had rehearsals going on down there.
Oh, that's, that's not really
Our apologies for that.
Can we ask about specific
Yes.
Yes.
So, and there's a lot of strikeout language in the very beginning. And it specifically, after the first goal and the objective 1.1, takes out cultural heritage, historic resources, tourist-oriented economy. And it basically just leaves one work, cultural up in just that one goal. And my fear is if we just keep striking these things out, that eventually the next code change, cultural will be out of the next one. And then cultural won't be protected at all. It won't be in a goal or an objective. And I don't see, it, it, one's a goal, the objective, it's not redundant. Why do we need to take all of that out?
You do have that in your historic preservation element. So we'll get
Why do we need to take it out here?
It's, it's difficult to have duplicative policies because, as you can see, if you look at your comp plan amendments over time, once you pull that string, it is difficult to go through
Well, one's a goal and one's an objective, so they're not duplicative.
No, I mean in other elements.
It's, there's a whole nother section that will deal with that. And just to have it in the one section helps when we're doing these types of revisions.
Right. So things that belong in your historic preservation element are there. Or it was just, you had so many policies that were in every single element, it's like, oh my gee. Put it where it's supposed to go. Same thing with coastal, same thing with conservation and so on and so forth. Transportation stuff, you have that throughout, all over the place.
Historical, um, we don't get to decide that. I mean, when, you know, a lot of times when things are duplicative, people want it out of one area so that they can control how it comes out of the, the next element. So I want to make sure it's protected in both areas.
It's going to be in your comprehensive plan. And you do have authority over your comprehensive plan. The Heritage Preservation Board that does all of that section of your code is different than what you're doing here. And you can't regulate the way that they do in their code. This is simply to make sure that those goes, goals and policies and objectives that allow them to do their job are covered in the document that you're going to enact.
So, but if they got rid of the cultural language, then it would be only, would it be gone then?
No, they're going to re, you're going to put it into that other element, correct?
Which we'll get to next week. Yeah.
Yeah.
So what goes away in one, in this, doesn't necessarily go away. It will actually be addressed in the appropriate
Correct. That's right.
Are there any though, that we're taking away, striking, that will not exist at all?
If it belongs in your land development code versus the comprehensive plan, yes. And that will be noted in the notes section of this. Let's find an example so we can
Yeah.
kind of show you like a specific. Let's get, let me scroll down a little bit.
Here's an example. Policy, this policy at one point, at one point, I think it's 13. We removed it because it's regulatory language that's in our land development code. So it doesn't really have a place in the comprehensive plan.
So, but that language doesn't exist in the land development code? Or it will exist in the land development code?
It's in the land development code. And if, and if there's things that are regulatory that are not in the land development code, those are noted for us to, when we do the amendments to that, to capture. But it's still relative.
Is the language the same?
It may have been adjusted, just for clarity. So for instance, there's several policies that, that are literally like three sentences, like run-on sentences. And it, okay, so you separate those ideas out so that it's easy for you all to read and the public to read. So that's an example.
But in substance?
I mean, we're just saying that you just are just telling us it looks the same, but we don't really
In substance, it exists.
Right, or in your code. But you know what? A great example is there was a lot of language in here that's captured in your special area plan that we did not adjust and we didn't adjust your MMTD. So that's a good example. So that may have been captured in your special area plan and then also in your land development code.
There was a lot of regulatory language that was put in back in 2008 timeframe that was very urban design oriented. And the intent there really got superseded when we adopted the special area plan and the smart code because that's exactly, that is the regulatory language. So that's some of the instances of how they've been addressed, you know, later on. The policy that's stricken here, 1.1.5 is another good example. You know, require infill development, redevelopment and new development to take and to get natural floodplain functions. Okay, all that's been moved to the coastal element. So, you know, by all means, you know, take note of the things that you're, that you see that you are raising concerns. Because if we haven't, if, if we have removed something that you were like, whoa, I haven't found it somewhere else and you said it was there, then we need to address that, so.
Just from a lessons learned perspective, what caused this? Why, is it just history of in the past, we just kept adding to it, kept adding?
That's exactly right.
It, it is. And in every year, the legislature will come up with something new that they need to put in your comp plan. So there's been a lot of interim amendments to respond to legislative changes. And then in 2011, the Community Planning Act came along and wiped out a whole bunch of stuff, so.
It isn't necessarily the act of the city that caused it. It was the act of the state or
Or, or Ford Pinellas. That's right.
Yeah, we had a lot of stuff because of Ford Pinellas that had to be in our plans, so.
So we just, later on down the table, you discussed like consolidating some of these zones. Would that be, for example, recently we had the Moses Tucker people. Would that have made those like the same? I mean, is this going to make it just easier so that people don't have to change the code to just come in and get approved? Because that would surely account for 10,000 more people. If we just make it easier for them to come in.
So, that's, so in that particular instance, the residential density didn't change on that.
Well, I'm thinking about are these proposed consolidations that are further down for zoning that have the mixed-use things that we were talking about?
This is, uh, so you've got two, two levels to your land use. You have the future land use map, which guides your land development code and your zoning maps. They're, they're two different things. Yeah, so this is, this is not zoning.
Okay.
Yeah. But you will update your zoning code to be consistent with your comp plan because you're required by Florida statute to do. It doesn't mean that your density
That's okay, you change one and then you have to change the other and then you've got yourself in a position where now you have to do that.
One, one of the things that we definitely need to do, we've talked about this at the staff level, is we need to develop, you know, you know, a list of things that absolutely have to be now addressed in, in the, in the land development code. And that becomes an immediate work plan, you know, as, so that those things don't get lost. You know, I mean, candidly, to your question about, you know, the Moses Tucker, could that have eliminated their need for a land use map amendment? Probably, yes.
See, that's my fear. And Mr. Zambellis was saying that what brought this change? Is it, you're telling us it's just to make, simplify things, but honestly, is you have a projection for 10,000 more people in 17 years, which doesn't make a lot of sense, so.
It's also compliance with chapter 163 and make sure that your documents are in compliance. When you pass your land development codes, a lot of times what you'll see, what I always put in there and make sure is in there, is a statement that says you're finding that the land development code amendment you are making is consistent with this document. Right? And consistent with the policies, the goals and objectives that you're enacting for your community. And that's part of the basis of how you're supposed to look at the land development codes to make those recommendations to the commission, saying, "We reviewed this, we reviewed this in the context of the comprehensive plan and this all fits together." And, and also too, you know, the county, I want to say maybe eight or nine years ago, completely redid their comprehensive planning and, and their land use maps and, and all of that. And one of the big things when we talk about density, I know you guys have heard density, 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 because that's the big kicker, is that if there's a future land use map amendment that's going to increase density for the county and it goes up to the county for their land use map change, they will likely deny it. for their land use map change, they will likely deny it, because you don't want to increase densities in their future land use categories, because a lot of those have been done to address flood map and floodplain issues that can cause, you know, you guys just were talking about having that shelter element in your land development code as a review criteria. Well, the importance for that is making sure you have those facilities accessible, making sure you have all these utilities, all this infrastructure that's going to meet your population demands and growth and needs, like the concurrency management like we were just talking about.
No, and I want to be compliant, I just want to make sure, while we're doing that, that we're not also just allowing all those others, like to change the intent of the original, what we really, you know.
Right, right.
Want, so.
The, the other thing that, again, that we were considering was the fact that under the countywide plan, they've consolidated those same categories, so we, we're following suit with them. If, for whatever reason, if that becomes, you know, something that is just ultimately a concern, not a problem. We can, we can undo that like that. Right now, we were trying to, you know, reduce the number of categories and follow suit with the countywide plan, and not inadvertently increase residential density in those areas. So like retail and services, under the countywide plan, it's like 20, 40 units to the acre, in ours, it's back down where it should be at 15.
Does it prevent those loopholes for like people building their stuff outside in Pinellas County Code and then annexing in with this?
Oh, I don't know if, I don't, I don't think I could, no, I can't stop that loophole right now, but that, that's, I know that's a concern, so.
You do have, I, that annexation came up during the public engagement, so I did read your annexation rules in, in your code of ordinances, there's probably room to change that, because most, most places, unless you have, unless you have language.
We, we're amending it right now.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, so.
That was so many months ago that I read that. But, so typically what happens with local governments like you, and this is all over the state, it's a, it's a, I worked for the city of Fernandina Beach, and we had the exact same issues that you did. You, you want, you sign these utility agreements, right, for extension of services that are outside the city limits, and then if you have language that says, once you become contiguous, you have to annex in because that's in the agreement. So that's something to consider, but you're working on that, okay. Very good.
We, yeah, we, we have that, and we, we did just, we've had first reading on those changes to the annexation ordinance that went through a few revisions with this board, so that, we almost have that one done.
Check that off the list almost. Okay, very good. Okay, let's see, let's find some other examples. So, and again, you can look at the, they're color coded, so the stuff that is highlighted in yellow are things that are existing, and it may just be a policy renumber. But the stuff that's highlighted in green is new, and, and most of the new stuff is actually related to the community engagement, but could also be related to the countywide rules. And you know what, just to make another point on your land use categories, you don't have to amend your zoning map, you do tend to have, like a, a table that corresponds, so your zoning can't be higher than your future land use, it can be lower. But it is something you have to take into consideration when you look at a zoning amendment, a zoning map amendment, your atlas amendments. So again, you couldn't do a, a map amendment to your zoning that is over your future land use. Does that make sense? Okay. Let's find some other examples here.
So we talked a little bit about the place based already, so you'll see those objectives highlighted as, as new, and how we're intending, if that stays in, that to, to function. And it does, you know, it is something that we, you know, would apply when we're considering annexations as well.
Policy 1.2.1 is a good example, is something that you can say, well, we did that. You, you adopted a special area plan, you did that a long time ago, so we're recognizing the fact that that has been done, but directing you to, to look at that from time to time, to periodically review it and perhaps update it. Let's see, what else is here?
I mean, you've got lots, a lot of stuff in here that's really good.
I think one big thing, too, to mention while we were talking about the land use categories, is previously, those were all within the goals, objectives, and policies.
Oh, yeah.
And, which is not the traditional way to do it, we have created a table that is referenced in one of the new policies, that basically makes it much easier to look at the category, the allowed uses and whatnot, and that's what I was showing you.
You'll also, if you recall, when we updated recently, the Commercial General and one other, went Commercial Limited, we switched from those, from those primary and secondary uses to permitted and permitted with acreage thresholds. That has been carried out through all of the land use map categories now, so you don't have this kind of nebulous, well, it's permitted, and this is a secondary, what's that really mean? So we, again, and this is following suit with the countywide plan rules, so, you know, we have, we did update a lot of the purpose statements for our future land use categories, the densities did not change, as well as I'm remembering. We've also, if you scroll to the far right, you'll see, we've also put the, the preliminary place-based area relationship, so where, you know, where would that future land use map category most likely be looked at? So the one that you're on, the first one is the residential very low, which is one dwelling unit per acre, so that is most likely going to be associated under that agricultural, residential estate, place-based map category. So we started to try to make that connection between the place-based map and these future land use map categories. And then, like you said, we've, we've, we have put the acreage thresholds in, where we, you know, following suit with, with, mostly with the countywide plan rules, but also here locally where we know things, like in our commercial land use categories, like the, the new proposed retail and services, putting that hard stop at, you know, on residential at five units, or five acres, anything more than that, you need to change the land use on that to, to a straight multifamily or something like that, so. So you'll see, that, those are the kind of the big changes with, with the future land use. And we tried to, you know, we tried to update the categories, you know, descriptions, so that they were a little more locally descriptive. I mean, frankly, some of them were just horrible, so. So, we tried to be a little more thoughtful about what they, what they really mean, so.
See, I just wanted to point out that the categories and get taken out, we just put them in a table form.
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, they were embedded awfully into that, so now you have a, you have a table.
Should be way easier to read.
My dream is that we'll actually have a nice comprehensive plan that I can hand to people.
Well, I'm not always saying that it was, it's like perfect or that you've changed that.
Oh, no, it's.
We tried to change the language to translate it into human, we'll put it that way, you know, so it's, it's easier to read. Right.
Well, yeah, it's a lot easier to get what you want when no one.
I, I found it a, I found it a lot easier to just start with a clean version and, and see, like, did we hit everything, and then go back and see how, you know, see how we need to, might, might need to amend things a bit further, but.
So back to the question you all had, like about 10 minutes ago, once you get to policy 5.1.1, a lot of that stuff was in your, is in your multimodal transportation district now, which was adopted a few years after your last major comp plan update. So that's just getting cleaned up. You've got it in another place in your comprehensive plan that we're not touching.
Yeah, let's see, can you zoom in there? All right, so that's.
Renee, can you tell us what was like, the most like inconsistent thing that, that was changed and?
Ah, the most inconsistent thing.
That, that will like see coming before us at the board, you know?
Um, I think probably the biggest change is not in the future land use element, but in the coastal or the conservation element.
And even your park, and even your parks.
Yeah, the, that, but the coastal, we had previously had a po, policies where if you were going to impact wetlands, you had like this three-tiered system of addressing wetland mitigation. We're proposing completely getting rid of that and just basically saying, you will not impact wetlands. Period. So, you know, we don't have a lot left, let's protect what we've got. That's a pretty big change, and I'm, I'm sure that we'll get some pushback on that, maybe, at, at some point in time, but that's a, you know, that seems to be where, you know, the public, you know, the sentiment is, and we've heard from people, and so that, that's a pretty big one.
How about coastal?
Coastal high hazard area?
It's way bigger than it was before, we updated your maps.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get to those maps when we get to your coastal management element, and you'll see the changes in your flood maps.
We had, yeah, we had made changes already regarding coastal high hazard area that went through, you know, policy discussion, everything with this board, so those changes have been incorporated in, it doesn't mean that we can't make additional changes, you know, again, about, you know, how we treat requests for, how we treat requests for increases in density in the coastal hazard area, and it really should be the exception, you know, and a very good reason for it, and so.
Mm-hmm.
And this is all, yeah, this is all the stuff that really is in the special area plan now, all the mixed-use type design stuff that was, a lot of that, honestly, all of that old language came straight out of the countywide plan, and they've even taken it, now they've put it, they took it out of their rules and they moved it to their strategies. So it was really, it served its purpose at the time, because we didn't have anything to really guide design in the areas where we wanted to, so we've accomplished that, so we really feel like, you know, all, all of that can really just be, come out.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a way to, and you may already have done this, where you referenced that it exists in the land development code? Have you looked at the land development code and said, there, it's there, there, there? So we, like we're seeing now, where original has been redlined.
Mm-hmm.
The land development code.
Yeah, it would be nice to see where exactly.
Where it is.
Yeah, where it says regulatory standards in LDC with a site to the section.
That should have the LDC code where, there, so we can see that and say, okay.
Yeah, we can, we, yeah, we can.
Migrate it over.
Yeah, it, it, well, and I, and I will say, it's not going to be verbatim, you're not going to see the exact same language, but we can, you know, the vast majority of it really is the SMART code, which is, you know, that special area plan for the docks and the downtown. Yeah, understand, understand. So we can, yeah, we can do that.
It's gone, but it's over there.
But it's over there, yeah. Yes.
7.1.4 is another example of things that were edited in the countywide rules.
This is where it came out of this. Go on. So, objective 5.4 is change from increased workforce housing opportunities, particularly within proximity to places of employment and transit, to provide for an adequate supply of housing across all income levels. That doesn't seem to me to be the same. That's totally different, like.
Here's, here's, here's a good, so here's why we did that.
We can't do that, I mean, how do we, how do we do that?
So here's, here's how it works. Most affordable housing is fulfilled by the low-income tax credit program, so a developer will, will apply for that money to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, and they have very specific rules regarding how those are scored. And so Pinellas County is actually competing with a lot of other counties for the same pot of money, right? So you're competing with Hillsborough, Palm Beach, Orange, a lot of the, not Miami-Dade, they've got their own pot of money. But in any event, if they don't meet those proximity points, they're not going to get funded. And there's more projects, a lot more projects that are not funded than are, and they have to be, not just the stop, and not just the line, but the stop has to be X amount of feet from the affordable housing project that they're supporting, has to be proximate to a school, a grocery store, a pharmacy. So it's a very rigorous process, and so now you've got some policy language that supports a project that's, that's going to come in, that they may ask you for funding for, but probably not, probably more like the county, because you don't have your own entitlement programs from CDBG or the, for ship money. You're not there yet, you're, that money comes when you hit a population of 50,000, and you're not going to get there anytime soon. So you won't get that funding.
What was the specific policy?
Objective 5.4.
5.4, I'm just scrolling down to.
So, I mean, we, we're changing it to provide that we can get money from the county?
The developer will, but you're recognizing the process that they have to go through proximity, and you may want to adjust your future land use map in the future, because we did write in some language about you doing perhaps a future plan for, specific plan for the 19 corridor, which is most likely where those projects are going to go.
I don't think that that's the same objective, like, does it look the same, the first one and the second one, it's not simplified language, it's just entirely changing the objective.
It, well, and, and a lot of it's already, is, is in the housing element as well.
Right.
So, but realize too, you know, an objective is something we aspire to get to, so we should be trying to do that, it's not a policy that says, do this. So that's, that, there is a, you know, there's a, there is a difference there. You know, what we're trying to say is that you, you need to have a range of housing opportunities, you know, for everybody, it's not just, you know, and that really does mean, you know, up and down the spectrum, so it's, it's a little broader than just focusing on affordable. And if you recall, I mean, the numbers that, that she presented in the, you know, for below 30, 30 to 50, and 50 to 80 area median, percentage of area median income over 10, or 20 years, is relatively low, actually. I was pretty shocked when I saw those numbers. Yes, ma'am?
What is a density bonus?
So we have, in our land development code, we have a density bonus that you can apply for, usually it's through a conditional use process, I think exclusively a conditional use process for us, where you can apply for up to a 50% density increase for specific affordable housing developments. So that gets you to 22 units to the acre for an affordable, and it has to be a certified affordable housing project. Again, it's going to be one of those low-income tax credit deals, or the county's going to be coming into play with their affordable housing dollars. It's usually going to be secured, you know, for 40 years at a minimum as affordable housing, so it's those types of projects.
Okay, thanks.
They have a minimum target that they have to reach to get funding, so generally those projects, and this speaks for statewide, so I'm not going to get specific for you, but they're generally between three and five acres, and they're generally between 50 and 150 units. If you look, if you, and those applications are actually publicly accessible on the Florida Housing Finance Corporation's website, and so you can look at all, they include a proforma. The only thing that's redacted is the land cost, because that doesn't really matter in the end for them, but you can see exactly what each of those projects have been approved at for funding.
So no matter how, how we deal with density and make our rules, that could be circumvented by an affordable housing project if they met all of the requirements?
We will get to that.
Okay.
Actually, there is a recent bill that was passed, Senate Bill 102, and I've, I've summarized that for you. You don't have to do anything yet, but in true fashion of the legislature, it preempts local governments. Every year, there's a preemption bill, and this is a preemption bill. It's not nearly as thorough as the original draft was, it certainly got watered down through the legislative process, but there is some preemption for you all, and we'll get to that, we'll get to that summary at the end, unless you want to talk about it now, we can always skip, skip ahead.
That's okay.
You want to?
No, we can wait.
Oh, okay, good, 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 okay. Oh, okay, good, 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 okay.
So Renee, this might be a stupid question. Does this do anything with the SMART code or does it, how does it impact the SMART code at all or is it just completely irrelevant or?
It, only, it, we have, we still have policies that, that recognize and require us to periodically review and update the SMART code for its continued objectives and the special area plan that's associated with it. So if anything, I think it just encourages it and, and.
Are we going to have a workshop for the SMART code?
Not part of this project.
It's, I mean, that's a regulatory document. That's like the land development code, not, not as part of this.
Because I think that would be.
Oh, I mean, eventually, well, eventually the land development code and the SMART code both, you know, are, you know, all of that needs to be periodically reviewed and, and updated. So there's, there's definitely, the SMART code's been in place now since 2011, 12. You know, it's definitely due for a refresh, absolutely. And actually this does require us to periodically look at it and update it, so. A lot of stuff was moved directly to the transportation element.
Here's a good example of code language that needs to go. Policy five point two point six, all mixed use centers shall have a maximum build to line of 15 feet from the right away. Here's what hap, because that is put in your comp plan, you can't vary from that legally. And what happens a lot of times is that you'll find when someone comes through with a site plan, it'll have an easement for utilities. Well, what do you, what do you do now? You can't, you know what I'm saying? And so they may need to back that up to 20 feet, 25 feet to accommodate for, for that.
It was, it's also grossly out of context.
Right, exactly.
That's the bigger, the really big issue is like, we had a lot of these lofty things that were put in here that we wanted to do. But we didn't have them based on the ground as to where they should be taking place very well, so.
Another good example is the building height. Kind of the urban design rule that was a thing in the late 90s and early 2000s was a ratio of one to one to one to three. So for instance, the reason why it doesn't apply here is because you've got, you've got right away like 19, that's wider than the interstate. And what, you don't want a, a building to be 250 feet tall or 150 feet, you know what I'm saying? That doesn't make sense. This was a concept that was invented in Sweden and sort of migrated over the United States. And now everybody's like, that may not have been the great, the greatest idea for, for the US, considering our transportation.
It's one thing on a 22-foot wide street, but.
Or even a 50-foot wide, wide street, but, because you can still divide that by three. But when you consider the width of American roadways, that may not be the best rule. And again, it's, it's code language, it shouldn't be in your plan.
You got rid of a lot of chef, didn't you?
There's also a fair amount of stuff in the, when you're in the, like a six point. Six point three point four and things about job growth and things like that, that really would be better suited to an economic development element. Should we, if we had one, well, we had an RFP out to do an economic development strategy and element. It's kind of, it's been postponed at this point, but my understanding is that, you know, we'll come full circle on that and revisit that. So, so some of that is really economic development language.
Here's another, here's another good example. Protect the city's remaining industrial designated lands from incremental land use amendments to non-industrial uses. What does incremental mean? If you don't know what something means and when you come to, when you, when something comes to you, that's a future land use map amendment, and you can't tell a developer or the city commission or the attorneys what that actually means, then by all means, take it out.
Agree.
Yeah. It's just confusing and doesn't give you guys any help in making decisions.
One of the things that we fairly admit on, and that's one of the intents behind that place-based map, you know, we have, you know, the US 19 corridor, the north side of the Anclot River, those areas that, you know, identified as transitional. And what that really means to, to us is there's change happening and we keep getting land use map amendments to change things. What we, what we really want to do is, we need a corridor plan that says this is what's going to happen, that's updated for reality of now. Same thing with the north side of the river where we've got this push and pull between, you know, residential and industrial and it's, you know, it's morphing its way together. And so we, you know, those are, those are areas that really we think additional planning needs to take place before we start allowing things to continue to kind of.
Right. So on some of these here where you have on this, particularly on this page I'm looking at, where you have the proposed language and you're removing these things, there's no comments here in the notes kind of saying why we're removing them. I see what you're talking about with the one where you talked about, well, this doesn't really necessarily mean anything in terms of the, the comp plan.
Where are you specifically? I'm sorry.
I'm starting here, right around where she was talking, policy six point four point one, six point four point two, objective six point five. You know, encourage mixed use development patterns where appropriate to reduce commuting costs and vehicle miles traveled. Well, that was one of the things that we had talked about when you were presenting on the feedback that you got from the community, that we wanted more mixed use development, or the community wanted more mixed use development. And also the, the reduction in commuting costs, so having those available bike paths and, and walkable paths increased in the city. So I'm kind of curious as to why we're deleting that if it's something that was sort of. What does encourage mean? Sit on the sidelines and cheer, do you know what, that's why, that's why.
Can you, which specifically, which one is it?
So, um.
Six point four.
Yeah, under six, under, to reduce, yeah, six point four point three was the one, but there's like a couple of them like that.
So, okay, I want to go over yours now. So you used the one word encourage.
What does that mean?
Does one encourage, you know, but, but why don't you just strike the encourage and rewrite it rather than strike the entire?
Because theoretically, your future land use category should already do that.
Theoretically? Have we looked to see if it's done that?
These are the words that we can use to make our decisions. So the, the, the point of what you're saying is what does that mean? That works both ways. So, you know, that's not necessarily a bad thing for us to have in there. Because I don't think we should be, we just struck a whole bunch of policies just because of the first word in them. And now we have no, these things don't even exist anymore in this new policy.
I can understand your, your logic, but striking it completely has not given me a solution.
So I think what.
Resolution, a resolution.
I think what we need to do, that's what I was about to say. We probably need to add some more comments. The last thing you all want to do is fight with the developer's attorney over that language. Oh my gosh, you don't want to do that. You just don't, you don't want to wind up in court over something like that.
Anything that's vague in terms of language will be twisted and used and we will be made to fight it and.
It gives, it gives the citizens a chance to develop their opinions and then come and, and speak on their behalf.
Well, then you've got three opinions.
Ending up in court is not, I don't think, the point of this workshop. So let the Board of Commissioners worry about whether they're going to end up in court.
It actually, it really, it really is something you should consider. And the other thing is.
We end up in court a lot, but I don't think that that's something that we should just strike all of these things because one word doesn't suit, because you're going to think, oh, yeah, well, I'm an attorney too. I can interpret words however I would like to do so. And that helps our citizens come and have opinions and voice their opinions on, on, on things that are coming into our community. So I'm going to give them that opportunity to see what that means. I'm not going to take that away from them.
It sounds like we just need to add some notes.
Well, hold, hold on, hold on, wait, 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 let me, let me jump in here, please. Let me jump in. So goal six, so you go back up to goal six, that's what this is under. Remove specific goal and move remaining policies under goal, under goal one. A lot of that was combined and put it back under goal one. So we, so.
The response should have been, then we did it because we just didn't write the comments and not that this word doesn't work.
Well, that's certainly part of it.
That's not a very good point.
The other thing is, is that the Florida statutes requires, and this is specific language from the statute, meaningful and predictable language in your comp plan. So fuzzy language, no. Meaningful and predictable, that you know what your, what your goal is and your, your objective. What does encourage mean? That's not meaningful or predictable. Saying something like, your future land use categories will do this.
But anyway, I mean, that's just, you're just saying that that's a word that you, oh, what does that mean? And now, but meaningful, you know what that means, like that's, that's not fair.
So I actually will take, I'll follow you on that. So why don't we change that one section to actually say that? Rather than striking the whole thing out, in which I don't know where it is.
Let's go back up to goal one.
To goal one. So a lot of this was repetitive throughout the future land use element. So goal six had a lot of policies that more so were pertaining to goal number one. So we took a lot of the elements within this, we removed a specific goal and we added all the policies and things under goal one. So that's why it's really hard to look at a strike through underline like this. This is the best way we can portray it to you guys by having a column showing.
Well, there was no comment.
Yeah, that's what's difficult. You're striking through, but we're not seeing the results of the strike through, what's happened.
At the top of the goal, it said that all that was moved under, we can do a better job.
Well, let me, can I go back because I saw some more consistent? When I was looking at section five, I was seeing a lot of where we struck it. But then we made the comment, remove regulatory objective and policies in this key word should be in LDC. So that should means that you may put it in. But it hasn't, it's not in there right now. It's not in the LDC.
And that's, that's the, that's that work plan that we have to do of things that must be done so that these things don't get lost.
If we're going to strike this provision, it has to be addressed in the LDC and we're going to see that.
You have 12 months to do it.
Well, why should, can, what's the problem in putting it in there and then striking it? What if, would we have to have a follow-up meeting to make sure all this stuff happened? I mean, what if it doesn't?
Well.
I mean, we just, just take your word and all this stuff happen.
It's stuff that we are required to do.
But we don't, I mean, why can't we wait until it's done?
If that, you know, if that is an absolute sticking point with you, then we can.
I mean, I think it's fair to say if all these things are going to be in something in the future, let's just wait till it's done. What's, if it's duplicative for a few months, it's not going to hurt just to make sure it's actually covered and then we'll strike it.
I agree with, with Jean's saying, because if you strike it, then it is out of the comprehensive plan. And we haven't addressed it in the LDC. So there's, there's a gap there now. There's something that's been stricken from this and it doesn't exist anywhere else. So we address it 12 months from now.
So I think, if, if that's the approach that, that, that we take, then, you know, it does need to be cleanly delineated in some manner that the intent is that this will go to the future, it will go to the land development code or another regulatory plan, whatever it may be.
It could be in the comments.
So we'll.
Actually, it, I'm just wondering, why can't it stay in where it is right now, work on the changes? And when the changes that you say are going to be in the LDC, at least there is no period where it doesn't exist. Because if you take it out of this.
Business would ever do anything based on just saying like, yeah, we'll just, we'll take care of it.
I can tell you, normal course of business, when you are amending comprehensive plans and doing follow-on legislative things, that there are things that need to happen in your land development code, is those amendments take place, you're basically amending the comp plan to set the policy for what should be happening in your land development code. Let us, I, I hear your concerns.
And I hear what you're saying, Renee. If you, you need to amend it, but in order to amend those that have to be amended, there has to be something changed so that when you, when you have amended this and it's gone, the new code that sits in the land development code is there.
I, I under, I hear you.
Got you, okay.
This, and this may be more of a legal question really, but would it be possible to, at the time of adoption of the plan, at the, at the very least, also adopt a, I don't know what, a resolution, I guess, that, so that, so that we and the BOC would formally adopt it at that point, that this is a list of things that have to be done as a result of this plan?
Yeah. I don't disagree with the plan. Because I think what you're saying makes sense.
You just don't want to see stuff and get lost.
Right. But if something's going to go in a black hole when we do it. So if we have something that at least keeps this there, because it will end up being over at the land development code. And if you can't do them both concurrently, then you've got to at least protect what's already on the books.
So both, both your land development code and your comprehensive plan are adopted via ordinance. So they'll go through all the formalities that you have to go through when you adopt an ordinance. It will come to you first, you will make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, and then it'll go before the Board of Commissioners twice for both of them. And ultimately, a resolution really wouldn't have an effect in terms of being able to enforce it because you can't amend anything in your land development code with a resolution. But the land development code, you can bring both ordinances together at the same time so that you're enacting them concurrently to make sure the changes that you're, you're enacting pursuant to your comprehensive plan changes are in your land development code. So if that's what you're asking, if we can do that simultaneously, yes, we can bring both ordinances together so you have a good comparison, but they will be separate public hearings.
Right. But I think that's, that's, that's the only way I see to be 100% sure that something doesn't get left out. And something might get left out in, in theory, on purpose, if, if there was somebody in, in the process somewhere that didn't want some of those things brought into the code of ordinances. They might remove something and, and then they're not working together, so.
I think the goal that you achieved is good. We've got to, we've got to have it followed by, here's what we've done to make sure that it is in the LDC. Or, or here's a way we rewrote it, even that, and it stays in the comp plan. I understand you're cleaning this up so there isn't redundant C N.
Let me, yeah, well, let me, let me think about how to, how to bridge this gap. I under, I understand the concern. There truly are some things that just should not be in your comp plan. So, you know, and that, and unfortunately, that's where they have been.
Can you say though, Renee, categorize it? They should not be in the comp plan, period.
Sure.
But, and they don't need to be anywhere else. It's, these are bad, they go away.
Right, right, understood.
Then at least you know how many that shouldn't be in the comp plan, they're not going anywhere else. Or if they're going somewhere else, they're being rewritten to fit into the appropriate land development code.
And we'll, we'll update the notes section, try to make that more complete. So I, like I said, I'm, I'm, I feel like we're probably going to have to do multiple workshops, you know, this is our first one.
I like what you're trying to achieve.
You know, I guess the thing too that I would, would recommend is, read a clean version and then go back and, you know, where you, you know, and see if, see, see where you feel like gaps have occurred. If, if gaps have occurred, if you really think that we've taken out policy or something or said something should be in the land development code versus in the comp plan, that's the stuff I really want to be able to focus on as we move forward. Because, you know, I'm, you know, this is, this is a lot of change. I will also tell you, it is, it is difficult at best to try to manage this comp plan the way it is right now.
You know what, can I just clarify? I don't know if it's a lot of change, I think it's a lot of. I don't know if it's a lot of change. I think it's a lot of change with no response. Meaning, you've done a lot of changing, which, it makes sense what you're doing, but we don't see the outcome.
Understood.
So if we knew that the change.
Understood.
See, you did, the originals here, the changes there, struck through. Over here, if we just had some draft, here's, here's what we plan on proposing language on. And maybe you can actually categorize these as saying, you know what, the ones that we know are just, the laws have changed, we gotta change it. Then we have to have something for that, where it gets put appropriately in the land development code.
We'll, we'll try to do a better job updating the notes side of things.
I do wanna, I wanna commend the level of effort here.
I agree.
Because it's, it's, it's overwhelming.
The future land use is the hardest one.
I know.
I mean, that, that is the hardest one, I think, you know.
You know, I can't believe amount, the amount of stuff that's taken out, and I think that's, that's what's kind of.
But it's also making y'all nervous.
It's, it's making us nervous because your comments over here, they make sense, they should be. Well, what will it be? So just if we understood that, that striking this out had merit, and it does belong over here in the land development code, here's what the language should look, I'm saying you have to actually do it, but at least say that the land development code should at least address it this way.
So are you looking for like a specific, like, okay, we need to amend section X or something of the la? I, I guess I'm trying to figure out, what level of detail are you looking for?
I'm asking you to follow your process the way you've done it. And you've already identified that these need to be changed. And you're striking it completely out. And some, you did add some language. So if you're striking it completely out, there's nothing that says, how you, what are you proposing to put in replace of that language in the LDC? And, and I would say, because you made a very good comment, it's very sensitive, time-sensitive, because the laws have changed. So you might wanna look and say, which ones are really time-sensitive? So let's focus on giving the revised language that should go in the LDC. And the others, we can, you know, there's a plan for it. Does that make sense? Or does it all have to be done?
I can, I think the staff has done a great job. My concern more is with the removal of so much stuff based on the original initial presentation of the future population. I don't like seeing things removed with this future outlook and growth of the city. The city can grow as it is. It has not shown that we're gonna, gonna have ten thousand more people in seventeen years. So, just as an optic, the optics look as, like, look at all this stuff we're removing.
I don't think we said ten thousand.
And in seventeen years, you're gonna have more people.
It's about, about five thousand.
I'm not talking about the city, I'm saying, you know, this presentation, the group that's hired. I'm just saying, I don't want to grow tarpon by ten thousand more people. We can't sustain that many people. I don't want to be removing things that allows that. It makes it easier for people to come in like that, because that's not sustainable for the city, and we're supposed to.
So I hear exactly what you're saying, and I think, at the end of the day, we have not, we have not touched the future land use in terms of density. So, to, to do anything other than what's already in, in, on the maps, requires coming back and changing something. And that's why with that place-based map.
Yeah.
That was what I, that's exactly trying to get to what you're talking about. We have vast areas where nothing really should happen. We've got transitional areas where things probably should be happening. We've got, and so, and we're trying to accommodate, you know, that, we never, we didn't have that. So everything has kinda come through in an incremental approach, and it chips away.
We should be rushing, and we have time to amend the ordinance. I know there's some time limit that we have to like, get all this done by next week, so.
You know, the, you know, I do wanna get the comp plan updated and get, you know, and, and the land development code is the, is the, is the follow-on work plan that has to be done. Charter requires it, for one thing, so it's not like we can just ignore, yes.
This question.
Sir.
Can you update the comp plan the way you're proposing, but in a way, though, that it's, the existence stays as it is, because it'll transition to the land development code.
What we might be able to do, so what we can, what we can do, actually, you just hit on something that I've, okay. We can identify the things that are intended to change, but we basically keep this as a legacy document that is in effect until X happens. I think there's a way that we can legally maneuver that.
I'll see.
Yeah, absolutely.
Effect upon enactment.
Yeah, yeah, I think we, we can work toward that end. I think that's a great way to, that holds us accountable, and, yeah.
Well, it also, the question of the attorney, if we're able to do that, and it's indicating that it's a legacy, and we do have something that comes before us, that this legacy has, shows that it's intended to be changed. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, but you still can only, so if you have something that will be enforced upon a condition, and that condition has not yet been met, then you can only enforce what's existing. Now, once that condition happens, then the new provision will be what's existing, and you can't enforce the old one. So you're still having that, you know, which law applies.
Regina, if we have some, if we have an instance where, let's say, the place-based vision map indicates X, but through the sum of, or something that's, should be amended but hasn't been done yet, we have a conflict. Can we specify, like, what supersedes or what should be more important? Is there a way?
The law's gonna, the, the law will provide, you know, because if you allow that supersessionary, you allow, quote, like, a choice of laws, then you're creating ambiguities that are, that are gonna give you constitutional issues when they're challenged. So you have to have a clear, this is what it's gonna be, and this is when it happens, if you're having something that's going to have a conditional enforcement date. You know, but yeah, you, you can't have, well, we wanna pick this one or pick that one. That, that's gonna give you too much problems with.
So if we go with the, this concept of a legacy, how much time would it take to, to create the land development code? Is it a year?
I, I mean, I, a land development code.
The changes.
The changes, I mean, I, I, I'm gonna say anywhere from a year to as long as two. Look how long it took us to get through, you know, just the changes that we've done, you know, over the last eighteen months. I mean, they, you know, they do have, they, they take a lot, take on a life of their own sometimes, but I think, the other thing I was thinking about was, a lot of times in, under the old comp plan, you would see, you know, amend the land development code to do X, Y, and Z within, uh, you buy twenty twenty-seven. So I'm wondering if there's a way that we could also kinda couch these, these, these changes in that type of a timeframe that gives a directive. Either way, let, let, I, I see where we're trying to go, so.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that a little bit better.
I forget, I don't know your name.
Catherine.
Catherine, because you had a good purpose here, and I understand where you're going with it. Had we gone this, how would we have brought this to a resolution? Meaning, a resolution that actually can, it, it changed.
I've got, I've got three ideas that I jotted down here. The notes need to indicate where stuff got moved or it's already covered, because I think that's where a lot of the confusion is that we're talking about right now. If you're talking about doing some things concurrently with your code update, I think that's fine, but you do need to cover the statutory requirements now. The stuff that's in Florida statute, the nine J five stuff that's gone, things in the countywide plan that you need to incorporate. Like, get the stuff you have to do now.
I agree.
And then the stuff you wanna do, maybe you can say, okay, when we do the land development code update, we know we've got some stuff in the comp plan we need, we said we wanted to do, we wanted to put it in the code, but maybe it takes a concurrent, maybe you can do those concurrently. Those are my ideas.
So there's three, it's like a three-phase approach, in a way. Three, you're doing all three concurrently.
Well, yeah, so the notes need to, I think we need to clarify that and then do another workshop.
Yeah, well, we need to get, yeah, exactly.
Regina, could you help us prioritize those statutory?
Right, well, so, one of the things you have to look out for, when is their year due? Is that next, is that twenty twenty-four, their year cycle?
Um, you've already passed, like, you're, you're already behind.
Okay, so we're already.
This really is part of our year at this point, so we can specify that this is our year, yeah.
So our, okay. So, your evaluation and appraisal report is what usually will cover any new statutory amendments from the last, over the last seven years, where you take those and you incorporate them in. And there's usually some really good, easy-to-follow comprehensive lists. I'm sure, you know, those can be provided to you. What changed from the last time you touched this document in Florida statute, to what's in effect now that you need to update? Those are the nuts and bolts that she was talking about in terms of the statute and your plan, what you have to do, and what you have to get rid of. Those are the easiest to identify and should definitely be your first priority, because if you take a document that's not compliant, and you send it to the state, and you send it, send it to other regulatory agencies and jurisdictions for review, you're gonna get comments back that are gonna not enable you to, to finalize the document anyway. There's what, what is it, a hundred and eighty-day review period from the, your first reading? So that's actually something you need to remember, too, is with your, your land development code regulations, you can pass those prior to second reading of your comprehensive plan coming into effect, because in between the first reading with the Board of Commissioners and the second reading of the Board of Commissioners for the ordinance on the comprehensive plan, it has to go for a state and, and jurisdictional review for any concurrent and neighboring jurisdictions to look at your plan, to say yes or no, this is okay, this meets standards, this is compatible with what we have in effect. And they do those reviews, and they do send you back comments, and we'll send your staff back comments that then you have to incorporate into your comprehensive plan. So that's something you have to remember with that review period, too.
Your year letter's due August first of this year.
But I can go ahead and send you now the, all the stuff that's changed for the statute.
I'm gonna find it real quick.
And there is a lot of proposed language changes that you have identified already, so it's, it's not like it hasn't been done.
There, there's a difference between the things you have, the, the nuts and bolts, and, and the things you wanna revise just because it makes your code better.
I agree, I agree.
But, I know they highlighted the, is it the N J five?
Nine J five, right.
Nine J five.
Because that was appealed in two thousand and eleven.
And I'm kinda surprised you actually still have anything in there that relates to that, because most jurisdictions have removed those types of things from their, by, I mean, ten years later.
Still surprised, Regina?
Don't, don't worry about it. I mean, we just did Pinellas Park's plan update, and finished that in the fall, and it was the same thing.
Thing.
Yeah, so. Don't beat yourself up.
So in the notes column, wherever we've got a blank, we'll make sure, even if it's just carried down from above, we'll make sure, I think it's, you know, I, I think we've, I think we did hit everything, but it's not, it's just not an easy table to read when, when you're scrolling through it, because it does look like that there's things, you know, the, the one, the policy six, you know, move objective and subsequent policies to, you know.
I think everywhere where you.
The transportation element, and.
We have to have that as a means of saying, okay, do we?
It's the shoulds that's got you, okay.
It's the shoulds that's got us, because.
Gotcha.
You made a good point of, it doesn't belong here. You have clear language in some that says, here's where you can put it, and you've already done the revisions.
Right.
But the ones that say should, how do we address that?
Okay.
That could be that, what do you call that?
The legacy.
Legacy.
Yes.
Very good work. Good discussion. You know, from my perspective, I'm only speaking for myself, I, I didn't have a problem with the, the two columns, current language, proposed language. Because it's very, it's telling you, here's the original, here's what we're proposing. It was the notes section, if we had that, that to be changed, to be.
More descriptive.
This change that you've proposed, it's actually gonna be in the LDC. And then, yeah, I, I was fine with this, I could follow it.
Yeah, I, it's very easy to follow.
Do we have a lot that's gonna go into the LDC? It looks like we do. So does that concern you?
Something that's already in the LDC.
A, a lot of it's already in, I think to your point of, you know, doing the hard work of, where is this already? Either in the smart code or in the land development code, where these types of, of things are already addressed. Again, some of these things were put in, like, a lot of the stuff that was in the policy six, that all came right out of a legislative directive years ago about, you know, reducing greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled, and so I had to put all this stuff in there. And so, and it kind of like, was this this big amorphous thing that frankly, never really amounted to much, but now we're trying to put it in the right place, not lose it, a lot of it, you know.
Right place.
Put it in the right place. Some of it, that right place, might be somewhere else completely, like in the sustainability plan, which some of our things are. So, you know, we have other things that, you know, that come into play, Stormwater Action Plan. We're trying to incorporate those things by reference, so they're an equal part of the comprehensive plan and things that we can consider as necessary. So, yeah, it, I mean, some of it does look like, my gosh, they took out like, you know, a giant section, so.
Everything.
We'll do a. Yeah, understood. And, and if we truly think it just doesn't belong, period, and shouldn't be anywhere, we'll let you know.
Or it's, yeah, actually, then you have a note field, it's completely deleted, not, not, not recommended to even have on the books, any book.
So I just sent you all the links to the changes in Florida statute, it goes up to twenty twenty-two, so it doesn't include this session.
But the, you know, the tendency with future land use elements historically was that they were kind of the kitchen sink, and they overlapped with every other element. And that's what we were really trying to tease apart, okay, future land use. Not that you don't want those connections, but, you know, transportation, utilities, so, you know, things that we were coastal conservation. So we're trying to make, we need to make sure we got the right references over to the other elements, so that when we are reviewing something, we're making sure that we're hitting all the boxes. Ultimately, we only have to hit the box once, not four times, and, in three different iterations and a little bit different between each policy. That's what we're really trying, you know, that was a big one for us. And everything seems to get dumped into the future land use elements, because it's the first place everybody looks, so. We'll get there.
And I am kinda, I'm just, I'm looking under the land use and comprehending, comprehensive planning section of the Florida League of Cities Legislative Report that they publish, and how they're talking about, like, increasing the required planning periods from five to ten years and ten to twenty years. Are we gonna be, and, and also some regulations here on the evaluation and appraisal reports. Are we gonna do that in this plan, or are we gonna wait until the next plan? Because I think some of these, especially given the rate we're going at when we adopt our new plan, they may already be in effect. You know, a lot of them have, I'm looking at some July first dates.
The legislative changes that need to be incorporated?
The new ones, the new ones from this, the twenty twenty-three session.
And that's, we have a slide on, on those at the end of this, where we talk about them. If we, you know, if we have the opportunity to go ahead and incorporate them.
Okay.
Actually, I was, I'm always a little hesitant to jump right in as soon as they do them, because then they come back and they, they do a glitch bill, so. You know, I think the ones that, the ones that says that we need to amend, great. Some of them were just purely preemptive, so that's the, you know, doesn't matter what we have in our plan, they're just gonna tell us what we have to do, so.
Yeah.
Those are easy changes.
Yeah.
So for the, the major ones, could we, since it has to go through the BOC twice, could we, do we have time to get that on our, I guess, next P and Z meeting? So that it goes, because they'll have two, they have one this month, they'll have three more this month, or before August, I mean, at least, I think.
So, if, that may not be a bad idea for them, because they do have so many changes that are required. Letting them, just to make sure they're in compliance with their ear, and maybe getting it out as timely and close to August first as possible, doing the nuts and bolts changes first, and then. And then coming back after August 1st with an interim. Inter, they, you're allowed to make changes in between your ear amendments. So maybe doing those changes first and then coming back with some of the other ones.
Between the proposed and adopted, right.
Yeah, yeah. Right, right. Only your letter is due August 1st.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And that letter tells us what we have to do and then after that.
Our intent was, we're in the midst of doing a major update, this will be our, yeah, so that was kind of, that's.
I thought you were talking about your transmittal letter.
No, 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 just the initial letter of how we intend to address our.
All right.
Are we going to have any ear based, yeah, yeah.
So for instance, the, the new statute that says you have to extend your planning period out to twenty years. We're right on the cusp of that. We don't have projection numbers from Schimper Center. To do population projections out to twenty forty-five. Those, those will be put out within the next few months, we just don't have them yet. And so between transmittal and adoption, you can make those adjustments, really just has to be in your data and analysis. It doesn't even have to be in your policy language. You're still capturing your needed projections for land use. You already, you're already doing that out to twenty forty. You don't have to make changes to that. I don't think that's a big deal.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we have a plan of attack, right?
We have a plan.
Yes.
A plan to plan.
We plan the plan.
I actually had a question, not pertaining to the workshop, tomorrow's meeting. I became aware, Merle, you probably know about this, that we can, I guess, appoint a representative to discuss, I guess, the votes of Moses Tucker.
That's in your rules of procedure.
I think because they came before the board twice and received more no votes, I just want to make sure the board is aware of what transpired, you know, between the two. And if, I don't know if Merle would want to do it.
So unfortunately with that, you can't do that at this meeting because this is only noticed as a workshop and that requires official action. What would be your best practices is when you're actually hearing those types?
Tomorrow night. Moses Tucker first reading is on the work, the regular session tomorrow night.
Right.
Right.
It's not a work session.
What would probably be best practices?
For us to have a representative talk about.
At the regular session.
Yeah. So they can't, this board would have to make a motion to appoint somebody and because it's a workshop.
They can't do it in a workshop, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm with you.
So, yeah, when you have your items, when they actually come forward and you know that they're going to be controversial like that. Or even if they were a split vote on your board and you wanted to designate a representative. I think it's best to do it at the time you make the decision on the application. That way too, you can make sure the person who's doing it remembers to take their notes more meticulously and things like that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any more comments on future land use?
No.
I think we know what we're doing here for the next round.
Thank you.
Um, let's see. Do we want to, we want to move on from future, future land use at this point? And walk through maybe some of the, the other elements? And then we can, like I said, we can always, we, we can tackle those again next week. I don't know between now and next week that we can have all those blanks filled in a hundred percent. So we'll have, obviously we're going to have to have a few working meetings on this. But maybe just step through kind of high level of what the other changes are on these, these other elements.
Okay, you've got some new policies and this is great. It's directing the city to do a multimodal master plan. That's going to, because right now you just have your MMTD, which is very limited in scope in your map. This is doing, this is going to do a citywide one. That's pretty cool. So that's some new policy language. And again, removed LDC language, clarified it, rearranged the MMTD policies to go after the objection, objectives that they were supposed to. And again, removed specific projects that you've already completed. So your road connections, for instance, that have been done over the years.
So this is not replacing any existing multimodal, this is actually new for the city, citywide, so that's.
Right, not just your MMTD, so it's a citywide master plan. This is just showing, and this is one of the boards that we showed at the engagement. So these are things that are either like in process or that have been done and just kind of points them out there. This is just a, a heat map where there have been crashes, the specific points are on the next slide. So this is like severity, this should not be any kind of shock to you here. But these are one of the things that we analyzed as part of your.
It's a GIS term for where you've got concentrations of activity, they're called heat maps.
These are the specific locations where those have occurred. And again, these are things that are reported. So not necessarily if something, if a project has gone not reported, which is the discussion we had with Dunedin today, same thing. Might be on social media, if it wasn't reported to the police or the highway patrol, then it's not going to show up on this map. Here's your sidewalk connections. Probably should have put them in green, green means go. But you can see where the gaps are, certainly. And then here's your trails map is the next one. Existing and proposed. So we pulled a lot of this stuff from the long range transportation plan that four Penellas put together. And now that's reflected in your comprehensive plan, which you're required to do. Want to go to the next one? That's pretty much it for housing.
Go back to the, the routes, the trans, the road routes, because I noticed something in the PowerPoint.
That's your, those are your sidewalks, so ouch.
That, right there.
Okay.
I noticed that there were two, what's the blue, that's your roads, right? Taking into nineteen?
That is, what is that?
The blue line, the heavy blue line, that's, that's.
Mears Boulevard connection?
Right.
All right, so there, there were actually in the PowerPoint, a later version, there was also the one that was done right by, you had. I wish I had the, can you put the PowerPoint up?
This is it?
No, no, I've, I've got one that, that showed me that there were two actually from Alter nineteen to nineteen, dark blue. And then there's Mears that had just a dash. Right there, yeah. See, when you look at that, that's not matching the other one. And the blue is, is the, and, and my question about this when I saw it is that I, I know that the one at Tarpon Avenue and the other one, the two dark blue, which one is, one is Tarpon Avenue, which is the other one? To the south, MLK. Why is it Mears a dark blue?
Oh, on, on this map, these are, these are transit, so the dark blue, so they're different in the legend. Maybe we should change the color so it's not confusing.
Well, because I see Mears Boulevard that's now takes you straight to US nineteen from Pinellas.
Yeah, this, this, it, it, that's a good observation. It probably should be on there.
And then the next one is where you come out at Lowe's.
But this is, this is really.
Transit, uh, transit and trails on this map.
Okay, this is, yeah, transit trails and, 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 yeah, this is not a, this is a different map.
So, okay, let's go through the, maybe we should, can we zoom in on the legend so you can see what we're talking about on this map?
Transit.
So the solid lines are things that are existing. And then the dotted lines are things that have been proposed in some other plan. Most likely the long range transportation plan that four Penellas has.
So those heavy blue lines are where PSTA runs buses. So this probably should have been labeled a little differently, but I think, yeah.
I mean. Okay, so those are just meant to identify the transit route.
Multimodal stuff.
For people that want to go from east to west and get out of Tarpon Springs, I think, you know, there's. Mears Boulevard needs to be given some attention, meaning that it's, it needs to be used more. Yeah, but in Lowe's, it goes out to Lowe's from, what is it, Live?
Spruce.
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 No, Live Oak, yeah.
Well, it's Live Oak and it comes in, yeah, it swoops down to Spruce.
What we should, so what I stuck in here was actually the, the board to show you what we showed the community. What we actually have done for your plan is update every single map and it's labeled probably more clearly than this is. Because this was just supposed to be a demonstration to show people what's, what's planned for the future. So let's plan on giving you the map package for next week that we've done.
I think it's in there.
The board that we start showing how many routes from Alter nineteen to nineteen.
Sure.
Than the typical Martin Luther King and Tarpon Avenue, the better it's going to be because I've never seen, this is the worst I've ever seen for traffic in Tarpon Springs. And I've been here sixty-seven years.
Is it in the map series, the future land use map series?
That's why I was challenging that, that people that live here, it feels like there's more. I think Snuggerd stayed longer.
Do you think that might be?
I think it may be.
It's the major transportation route. So, so there is a, in, in, in your packet, there's a PDF that says future land use map series. And there's a map in there that says major transportation routes and Mears is on there through to US nineteen, so. Yeah, unfortunately it's just, there's so much to like.
Yeah, we got Cross.
There's too many pieces.
Mears, we got Tarpon Avenue, we got.
This is just number of lanes too, so. And this, so this is one of the maps that you're required to have in your transportation element by statute. So this is basically like, I, I think it'll be just more clear for you if we bring the entire transportation map package to you and you can see things specifically labeled versus things that were guiding discussion at the, during outreach with everybody. I think that'll probably be clearer for y'all. Okay, okay.
And then this was just identifying projects, so. We probably need to put Anclode Road on here. It's a major upgrade, so.
Are these projects that are already programmed?
Or already done.
Yeah, they're already done, okay.
All right, what's our next slide there? So crash data, we talked about sidewalks, trails, housing.
A lot of the housing element, again, came from other parts of your plan. And then just like all the other elements, cleaned up the language so that you don't have three ideas in one sentence, you have one idea per sentence. Policies that don't apply anymore, either for statutory reasons or because nine J five was repealed. Duplicative policies, there was a lot of those. And even stuff that came out of this element and moved to where it was supposed to go, more like, most likely the future land use element. And then what came out of the engagement was the mobile home parks issues specifically. So this was a big deal because you separated out your coastal management and conservation elements, which were previously put together. And so those policies literally got split in half.
Is that a good thing?
I think it makes it easier to manage.
Yeah. They're not necessarily the same thing, is the thing. Same thing, we're going to repeat this over and over again. Code language was deleted, policies were combined and simplified, cleaned up the language. This is what, one of the new policies that's, that's good. Requires development of a sustainability action plan with your vulnerability analysis, which you're working on now, right? The vulnerability analysis. So the, the thing about the vulnerability analysis. Any future money that you get from the state will be dependent on you having done that. So it's all about the cash, right? Somebody else's cash, the state's cash in this, in this case. And there's a lot of money going around now for, for these kinds of efforts. So any kind of implementation that you want to do in the future, mainly with, with roads, stormwater, those kinds of facilities. You have to have done this to get money from the state. So this is a big deal, a big change.
Catherine, is it just state that's a funding source or are there federal avenues available?
Some of the money is filtered down from the federal government. The one thing that gets triggered by the federal government is when an emergency has been declared. And so then you've got mitigation grants that come from the feds to the state and then down to you all. And that's a lot of the, the money that's been being filtered. Money's still being filtered from Hurricane Irma, so you will see in the future Maria and Ian coming out next. So there'll be mitigation grants that you all can apply for, certainly. One of the projects that we're working on for the city of Tampa is a coastal area action plan and that was funded by CDBG mitigation money. So you'll see that now with Ian and Maria. But you got to do, in order to do construction money, you have to have done that vulnerability analysis.
So one of my questions on that is with respect to the CRS system and participation in the NFIP. What policies, goals and objectives, particularly in coastal management, that we're going to get points for, credit for in order to increase the city's CRS rating? I don't know, I know like there's some things in land development code that you can put in there that assist with that. But I'm not sure how much your comprehensive plan changes and enhancements can go towards that.
There is, when you're doing your CRS report, some, some points that are awarded if you're doing things like outreach. Making sure there's stuff on your website and things in your comprehensive plan. The biggest points come through things like updating your floodplain management ordinance. And then technical amendments to the building code, which is a little more complicated in Pinellas County because you've got the PCCLB to coordinate. So you've got a countywide building code, whereas other places don't have that, they've got their own building code. So increasing free board is a good one. What else? So there's a new coastal A zone that came out with the new flood maps. And adopting V zone standards for the coastal A zone, that's a place where you can pick up points.
Which I believe we've recommended.
You've done that, okay.
Yeah, and I think most Pinellas communities have done that. I know that their, the countywide floodplain manager was very good about getting everybody on board with that.
Okay, good.
But that, but that's really more code, so I guess with the comprehensive plan, it's just those policies that are going to enhance those elements and aspects of your flood?
Right, okay. And you pretty much did what you were required to do from the peril of flood. Stuff that was from twenty fifteen, so you do have policies that were already in your plan that do that.
Noticed in the initial presentation that there were, from the community outreach programs, didn't sound like people were too fond of the mobile homes. And this new language with the mobile homes doesn't seem to protect them very well. And it's all new policy.
So we, so you want to strengthen it a little more?
Well.
Are you in the, you're in the housing?
Back up to housing, okay, hang on a second.
It goes from then, can you support mobile homes and then to, that they'll allow them, allow new manufactured homes in areas where supported by existing land use density outside vulnerable areas, I mean, they're all on the water. So we know that.
I think we mapped your mobile homes.
Well, I mean, a lot of them are, recognize, protect existing from non-affordable housing redevelopment.
I think you're talking, yeah.
What we're, I mean, what we're trying to do is.
It's not like they're being protected at all.
Well, no, actually that, that, what we're trying to basically say is if they are going to be redeveloped, they have to be redeveloped as affordable housing. So we're trying to remove the incentives for what you see happening where they just come in and wipe them out. And now you've got another typical subdivision. And mobile home parks really are, for a lot of people, they're kind of, they're, they're naturally occurring, naturally occurring affordable housing. And so if, if you see something that basically looks like that we're not protecting them, call that out because, I mean, we're.
There's a mobile home park on Chesapeake on the water, that's.
That's a trailer park. That's actually land. That's actually land used and zoned for, you know...
It just seems like, you know, if they're eliminated...
The one up at the point, Chesapeake Point?
Yeah. Well, they're mobile homes.
No, that is a mobile home park. Yeah, it is a mobile home park. They are on the water.
Go into that area if those places are gone. Like, that's not, no one's, that's not affordable, it's on the water. That's not going to be affordable housing, that's going to be people that have a ton of money. So it seems like we're just trying to eliminate people that can, actual affordable housing that exists today to make sure that they'll never be there again once we make the code so that they can't exist anymore.
Actually, so the word allow is actually better than encourage. And the thing is, is that if you're recognizing those things as permitted uses, that's better because they're not non-conforming. And so if you get wiped out and they can't come back, then you've completely eliminated that because it's a non-conforming use. So that's actually better language.
The comprehensive plan right now very much does not...
It says protect.
It, it...
But that's what it's...
But we have... But, and then, and then this...
Entirely gone, there's no protect, that word is not in any of the new language.
Say that again?
I'm going to look that one up.
Evaluate and amend, if necessary, the zoning district standards in the land development. I mean, that's just saying, we'll reevaluate where you're allowed to be, you know, to be.
So mobile home parks aren't a land use category. It's a zoning category. And historically, what has happened is Chesapeake Point's a great example. At some point thirty years ago, somebody put five meters to the acre and R-100 zoning on it and non-conformed it. They have no protection right now. What we're trying to get to is, let's find a way to at least, if that gets wiped out, allow it to redevelop maybe as mobile homes at the current density that it's at. You know, so, I mean, that's, so I hear what you're saying. Not enough protection for mobile homes.
You know, the initial presentation was not, was anti-mobile homes. From the community outreach program is what I remember from the...
No, I think we said that that was identified as important in the original presentation.
Well, but if, but the word protect is completely gone from the new language, I mean...
Because it's telling you to amend it and allow it. This is actually stronger language.
Evaluate and amend the zoning of them, right?
Exactly.
Right.
That's direct, you have, let me, so when you have language like that, it's saying you shall do this. The only thing I would take out from policy 1.8.4 is if necessary. Because that's saying, eh, maybe so. But it's telling you to evaluate and amend it. You have to do that, you shall do that.
I thought under the floodplain, though, the goal was to eliminate any mobile homes in the coastal high hazard area.
The coastal high hazard area and the flood zones are two different things.
Right.
And so coastal high hazard area really just is in the comp plan. Because there's, of course, in the brilliance of our legislators, again, you've got two terms for coastal high hazard area in the statute, one that's under the building code and the floodplain management, which is completely different than the coastal high hazard area. That's category one inundation, like the possible. And the inundation policies are what are to, meant to direct you for adopting changes in your future land use map. So that's a growth, that's a growth management policy. It's not necessarily the same thing as your flood zone. So if you got wiped out by a flood, yeah, if it's not permitted, those things can't come back. So you have to permit them.
Your substantial damage rule.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right.
That's what, that's what I was...
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but just from a practical standpoint, those things aren't going to come back in the coastal high area, high hazard area, like right next to water areas where they are, because they'd have to build them up so high in the air...
Challenge.
To, I mean, and you would have to have stilt mobile homes to make it work. That's the only way they could comply with flood regulations.
And they, in some of the instances, that's exactly what's occurring throughout the county, is they're being replaced with, they're being brought to minimum base flood elevation and they're being replaced with a HUD compliant wind-loaded structure that's almost as good as a stick-built house under the Florida Building Code.
Yeah.
And so what we were trying to do with this is, with that objective, I mean, one, recognize the value of the mobile home parks as providing a very necessary type of housing for the community. And two, you know, again, allow new manufactured home developments in areas where supported by land use density and outside vulnerable areas. Right now, we don't have any place that you can do a mobile home park by right. Zilch, none. You know, incentivize replacement of those old mobile homes with HUD compliant units. Compliant wind-loaded structures is what, that's what that's meaning, HUD compliant. You know, so, you know, I think we have much stronger protections built into this than we had before. Maybe I'm, if we missed the mark, though, we missed the mark.
No, I think just the definition of the options of places for replacement. Because like you said, right now, there's no area that would allow it by right. So you want that option, you want that encouragement to relocate it so you're not losing the affordability unit count. And there's probability or possibility for places to reallocate it. So I think that's important, that that is provided for somehow, some way to say that it gets, there's a process to steer it to an appropriate location, equal in density or greater.
Do you want to jump down to your flood maps?
Chesapeake is a little unusual. So all the big parks, most of them are unmuted, so there's some edge woods, the meadows up north. All this stuff is probably in the... Older parks, there's another, older parks. Some people have been there for a long time, older people. That's the kind of stuff we were thinking of.
Yeah, you know.
So, and it's on 19, so.
Yeah, there's stuff that's on 19 and... Fortunately, a lot of those are resident-owned. Some of them are, but you've got some that aren't. And those are the ones that are always like on the chopping block for a developer to come in and inquire them. And that's what we're really trying to minimize.
That 2080 really scares me, looking at that.
That's an attention grabber, isn't it?
Red zones. I think we will. Change from forty years later.
Oh, you should see the 2100 ones if you really want to get scared. Yeah.
Florida's underwater.
Yeah, and my insurance is showing that right now.
So is mine. Not happy. Peach fruit in Ocala.
Let's jump down to the flood map. And so you can kind of compare this. It does follow predominantly your existing flood maps. Which is kind of... I wouldn't say good. I need to rephrase that.
Consistent.
I mean, it's still, you know, you know what, go back to the, I'm sorry, flip back to the... Yeah, so you see right in the corner, probably need to update that so you can see it better. Right in the bottom right-hand corner, you can see what the feet are. The one on the right, right down on the bottom. It's kind of a transparent table, we need to fix that so you can see it better. Right-hand corner. Keep going. See it? Low, intermediate, and intermediate-high. So 2040 is less than a foot, 2080, 1.3, 1.6, 2.9. It looks a little scarier than those numbers imply. But still...
But even six inches is huge, isn't it?
Exactly, yeah.
And that's, you know, that's one of the pieces of data that we wanted to get added to that environmental reserve, place-based map category of, you know, recognizing these areas are vulnerable in the future.
The 2041 is reflected in that, but not the 2080. So if you want us to adjust that, we'll have to go back and do it.
No, I think the 2040, for our purposes, that's our planning horizon, so. And then I guess you've got the coastal high hazard area maps, yeah. So that kind of, the never-ending creep of the expanding coastal high hazard area.
So this, for growth management purposes, is the category one possible inundation, so storm surge. It's a storm surge map.
Big difference, not too much, from 16 to 22.
It's certainly, but this affects your places where you would like to redevelop.
Yeah.
To me, the most interesting portion, piece of that is how much of US 19, or yes, right there that pops up in this map.
Why is that?
Oh.
I, you know, it's...
Better data. I mean, this comes, you know, the state of Florida, in conjunction with NOAA, did significant, like they have cooler technology and got more specific with how this actually works. And this is nationwide, not just Florida, but Florida contributed to, state of Florida contributed some money to that. So this gets updated between five and seven years, the same thing as your flood maps.
Flood zones.
You didn't have too much of an increase in your flood, flood maps.
We actually had a lot of areas that came out of flood zones because they had been elevated, but they never did like Lomas or anything like that. And then when they actually got the updated LIDAR, they popped out, so.
Okay, so the conservation, this is where your coastal management and conservation got split apart. So some things stayed in coastal management, some things got moved over. The strikeout and underline notes section should capture that. Some of the things, again, going back to what came up in the public engagement, were the vegetative and habitat communities, which that's part of your future land use map series package that you should have. Maintaining your vegetation, and then the Anclot River Water Management Plan came up. The use of fill, there's an example of the policy that you were talking about. Restricting the use of fill is a big deal. And that's what you get points for from your comp plan, from your floodplain management regulations, and then technical amendments to the building code, which I think you said you already did for the coastal A zone.
Yeah, the concurrent regulations for both, most Pinellas communities did. I think almost all of them.
And then several policies came out from your strategic plan. These two things were supposed to run concurrently, they were a few months off of one another. But those policies, that was indicated by staff is very important to incorporate.
Sustainability plan, wasn't it?
And your sustainability plan, both.
Sustainability plan, yeah.
And then tree canopy came up a lot at the meeting. And we've got your tree canopy map and the heat island map. There we go. So that's a board that we presented to the public. So it shows, the heat map is kind of cool. You know what was interesting when we were looking at the hotspots for the tree canopy and the heat maps? They kind of, you can see where there isn't tree, there's heat island effect. And it's around your schools, which I thought really fascinating. But those were your biggest gaps in your tree canopy. We should have mapped the schools on that and you could see, we thought that was pretty interesting. And then, of course, along 19, you don't have any, you don't have any trees on 19. So there's an opportunity. And of course, the more trees you have, it helps with stormwater runoff and it helps with greenhouse gas emissions and so on and so forth. So the more trees you have are good.
And we do have a kind of a major project going on right now that's being led by our city arborist to a grant. And Pat can explain more about it, what it is than I can. That's where they're mapping, they're basically mapping the tree, the inventory and the canopy and coverage and stuff. So we'll have that to fall back on as, you know, when we're looking at the land development code and where we need to strengthen things there, so.
So a developer could be required to make more of a tree canopy for any development that...
Yeah, at the end of the day...
And not just like little crappy trees, but good trees.
Mature trees.
You know, where you see, where, you know, where you could see these policies or the changes in the land development code going would be where you have, you know, a map like that, like US 19's a good example, where you have a heat severity and, you know, issue. Well, a developer coming in there, you may have your regulations set up so that the priority is more on, you know, you have to reduce your parking to the benefit of planting some additional tree for future canopy. That's the kind of things that, you know, these types of maps will give us to, you know, to make those value judgments and make changes to the land development code down the line once we have all the data from that study that's going on. But that, you know, using this type of information to say, okay, hey, this is mapped. We have, this is a heat island area. Your first preference should be toward, you know, some sort of a moderate parking reduction from, you know, because they usually want to max out parking on US 19, more than they need. You need to, you know, you need to contribute to the tree canopy, so, or preserve tree canopy if you can, excuse me?
You guys are already doing that now. I see them on the proposals, where you tell them they have to have so many trees and things.
Well, we have minimum planting requirements, but they're not specific to, they don't like home in on an area like 19 that says where we've got an urban heat island effect going on. It doesn't shift the emphasis to that, to, you know, maybe you need to give up some parking or something like that to the benefit of future tree canopy. We kind of have, again, we kind of have a one-size-fits-all approach.
I mean, you said we have a city arborist?
We do.
She's great, yeah, she's...
Yeah, yeah. So that would be good, working with the city arborist, because just any tree may not be sufficient or appropriate, just the right kind of tree.
Right, well, first of all, right tree, right place. And then, which actually, there's a really cool app that was done, that's done by the Arbor Day Foundation, and it will tell you, you could plug in your own address. And it'll tell you what side of your house to put the tree on based on the soil context of the area, what the right tree is. The Arbor Day Foundation did a nationwide map, it's really cool.
Up to your house and tell you.
But an area of opportunity to look at in your code is just the size of the islands that you require a developer to put in in the parking, because a lot of those aren't big enough to support an oak tree. They just aren't. They're going to look like, in forty years, they're going to look like the same size as the year that they were planted. But if you increase that island and they've got, then they've got room to grow and thrive. So that's just a basic thing to take a look at in your code. I haven't looked at your parking code.
Just no more trees at Craig Park, please.
No more what? No more what?
No more trees at Craig Park.
It's full.
All right, let's finish kind of stepping through some of these. So, okay, rec open space, we have some changes.
So this is actually an element you don't even have to have, but you want, you want it, so you're keeping it. Same thing as before, clarified the language, remove projects that are complete. Anything that's duplicative or move to a different element, that was done. The one cool thing that we did and suggested at the public engagement was in the future, taking a look, what you have now in your plan are the, gosh, it was back from the 90s. The state put together a level of service for local governments to look at for the original comprehensive plans that were done in the 90s that said, all right, you're going to have this many basketball courts per capita and this many soccer fields. And then the state came along and updated their stuff and said, you know what? This is really meant for regional park planning. It's not appropriate, and it says in the plan, this is not appropriate for local governments to use. And so what we looked at is where your parks are located and if people can actually get to them by walking and biking. So there you go. So you can see where your gaps are. So maybe, you know, and what people asked for and what actually you all asked for when we came to you last time was, why don't we have a Parks Master Plan? So that's a policy that's been put in here. And looking at the proximity as part of that, you can, it could be a pocket park, it could be a community garden, it can be something more active, whatever. But that's one thing that you'll be looking at as part of a Parks Master Plan and thinking about proximity, not just the number of basketball courts per thousand. People love pickleball and want that, you know what I'm saying, like?
You don't want to talk about pickleball.
I swear, there's so many people, so many local governments are adding that and adding those.
So I was looking, I looked, we have seventeen parks, but that only includes our parks. So we also, like, Howard Park is a huge, but it's a county park, so it's not included. But I mean, per, like, our area, like, what is it? like, our, our area, like, what is a normal, for the city of our size, how many parks is it average, I mean, because I feel, I feel like seventeen is a lot, but-
You know what, I'll have to, I'll have to take a look.
I, I have seen some times in those concurrency, um, and they may have it in theirs, I don't know, but, um, a lot of times in the concurrency section of your ordinances, it says that you have so many acres of recreational space or green space per your population.
We have that.
Yeah, so that's, that's in there somewhere.
And what we, what we've set up now is, we kind of have a two-tier structure of, until we get a master plan, these level of service standards will still apply, and then we have a policy about this proximity, we kind of need to reconcile those a little bit better, I'll be honest with you, I was looking at it today, and I'm like, we need to specify a preference here, you know, or an order of operations, but we definitely want to be able to incorporate this proximity map, so when a developer comes in, and they're, if they're doing an apartment complex or something, and they're, you know, outside one of these areas where there isn't proximity to, um, you know, one of these parks that's within walking distance or whatever, then they have to take a harder look at what they're providing onsite for their residents, so, using it in, in that manner. But it reminds me, it brings me back full circle to our previous conversation of, we kind of set up that, that striation, until this is done, this still is in effect, so I think we, that's an approach that we're gonna take with some of these other policies that, um, where we say it needs to be here, or needs, so this needs to be done, it stays in until it's done.
So, I, I do have a question on, like, areas where you can do this, because I know that, um, for certain kinds of infrastructure, so things like, um, hospitals, uh, fire departments, police departments, your city and town halls, you're not supposed to build anything new like that in some of those coastal high hazard areas or floodplone, floodplone areas, um, but I'm not sure if that would apply to things like recreation and parks, so it does not apply to those.
No, because a lot of, uh, local governments are getting smart about their, their park planning, and they're doing double duty, so a park is, could be a floodable park, for instance, and there's, there's stormwater and a public park, so that's, it's just trying to be more efficient with the land you've got.
One, uh, one stat that I do know, because we've ran this number a couple of times, um, and it does not include water bodies, right now, is it twenty, like, almost twenty-five percent of Tarpon Springs land area is in some kind of recreation or open space, you know, designation, it's a big number, um, you know, on the, just looking at, if you, it-
Again?
About twenty-five percent of Tarpon Springs land area is in some kind of, and I'm not talking about the water bodies, is in some type of either preservation or recreation or open space, or is publicly acquired, it might still have a land use design-
To be used as recreation.
It's basically, exactly, and so, I mean, it's, it's a big number, um, it's, it's up there, and that's including the county parks and things like that that are in our jurisdiction.
You know what would be interested, if, the, all those green dots, if we could identify what recreational activities are there, because you'd be surprised that most of them are little playgrounds.
And some of them are, and some of them are.
A lot of them are, but I think people maybe just not be aware of where half of our parks are.
We've got them listed on the board, if you want to, can we zoom in?
Lee Anderson.
We had a facilities map, too, that was in the-
Yeah, so, yeah, they're listed, oh, you can't see where I have it.
Craig Park.
Oh, darn it, I can't zoom the employee, sorry. Anyways, there's descriptions.
Just to, yeah, put it in perspective a little bit, I think we're well-served by acreage, I'm, I'm less sure if we're well-served by facilities.
Exactly.
But, uh, in a, in a previous life, I did park system master plans, and, and the only one that I can actually remember the stats on was, was Little Rock, Arkansas, because it was my own town at the time, and it was over two hundred thousand in population, and it had eighteen hundred acres of parks, and it was considered actually to be pretty well-served at the time by looking at the, the NRPA, uh, standards that were in place at the time, so, so we're definitely in pretty good shape on acreage, but you'd have to break the facilities out a lot more detailed to look at that, and we really do need to do a comprehensive park system master plan.
A master plan, I-
We've talked to our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and, and the staff about that, and they, they do, you know, of course, you know, that's, somebody has to do it, and it's got to be funded somewhere, it is a policy in the rec open space element, because, you know, we can't, we, at the level that we're trying to amend, we couldn't get into, like, the nitty-gritty of, you know, how many soccer fields do we need at this point, it just wasn't practical, so we've kept our existing level of service standards for those facilities that were set, you know, twenty-five, thirty years ago, probably, and those will stay in place, but we're recognizing that when we did the, the public outreach, certain things came up, you know, pickleball and things like that, so we're trying to use that to drive, we need to do a Parks and Recreation Master Plan for the city, and it's such time that we do that, then that would take precedence over those level of service standards as to how, or we'll come back and update the comp plan accordingly.
Who'd be responsible for that, Parks and Recreation?
Uh, Public Services that falls under, Parks and Rec falls under Public Service, Public, well, it's, actually, it's split, so the parks themselves are maintained by Public Works.
Yeah.
The facilities-based stuff, um, and recreation programming and stuff like that is part of Public Services, so it's kind of two-
Who polices, who's responsible for, I mean, I really don't know.
Sure.
Who's responsible for that, say, say Sunset Beach? No, say you go to Sunset Beach, that park, I don't know what Sunset Beach is, is it considered a park?
Yeah, it's a city, it's a city park.
So who, you see Public Works taking care of it, and you see the police on occasion driving through, checking for, um, permits probably, to launch, and, um, but that's it, right, I mean, does anybody, who's responsible for policing it?
Police, it's still gonna be your police department?
Well, no, the police say, okay, um, I just, out of curiosity, I didn't know how it worked, out of curiosity, because I remember I, and I even put something on Facebook, I was so upset about it, I was down at Sunset Beach, and the jet skis were crazy, in and out, and the launch is right next to swimming area, and that particular day, there were families down there with a bunch of toddlers in the water, and these jet skis were taking off like bats out of hell, and the little toddlers were falling over, you know, and I'm, like, watching, watching, making sure the parents see, I mean, I was just-
So that's, so that, yeah, that's, it's either gonna be FWC, or Pinellas County has a marine patrol uni- unit, um, well, there, I know they have one launch for their marine patrol unit down by Indian Shores, and I'm not sure where their other launch is, um, but they will patrol waters for, for things like that, they actually just released on, on their Facebook page, a public video about water safety, operation, and proper speeds of boats and vessels and watercraft, so that is something that's on their radar right now.
Is it all, isn't this something that the city of Tarpon Springs does, I don't know, they got a boat out the sponge dock.
I don't know if your, if your police department has a marine patrol, you have to have a marine patrol unit.
Fire boat is a rescue boat.
That's, once it's in the water, if you do not have a marine patrol unit, then your police department can't do it, and it's gotta be either the Pinellas County Marine Patrol Unit, FWC, um, Coast Guard, those, those entities will patrol.
Because there's sneaking rentals and, um, charters out of there?
Well, the rentals they can get, the rentals they can get from the shore, the rentals your police department can get from the shore.
What do you mean, they can, they can deal with them at shore?
If you have an ordinance, if you have an ordinance that says that they can't rent in the, in the park like that, then they can get code violations, I don't know if you have an ordinance that says that or not, but that can be something that's regulated, but once it gets into the water, that's a different issue.
We have a truck that sits down there on the weekends, not a truck, a trailer, I'm sorry, stacked with the log boards to rent, and everything, pardon me, everything I looked at in the ordinances says no, you can't do that.
They generally would have to have permission from our public-
Special permission.
A special permit from our Public Works Department to utilize any city-owned facility for conducting business, like, they're not supposed, you're not supposed to hold yoga classes out on the beach and stuff like that, so, does it happen, of course, you know, but I would always, it's something, you see something like that going on, I mean, you know, call, call the next, on a weekend is tough, but, you know, call, you know, call and get it on our radar.
Tarpon has two FWC officers that live, like, in town.
We do, okay.
Locals.
All right.
There's, yeah, there is one around on the river a good bit of the time.
Well, that's nice, but the, uh, the charters, and I can see, I mean, it starts to get, one weekend I had gone down there, and there had to be, I don't, it was a big, huge flotilla of the jet skis, and I could tell, and I'm listening and I'm watching, those were rentals.
Yeah, that, that definitely should not be happening.
No, and it's, yeah, so I, I just didn't know, you know, who to talk to, but that's sad, and, but, I'm bringing that up because I saw in the materials, people want to know where they can launch, you know, where they can launch, they want more places to launch, and, um, kayaks, for example, but even the kayaks are a mess, bless them, I mean, I mean, it's, it's a great sport, but I saw a little old man in a kayak almost hit a little girl, and he was panicking, he didn't know how to avoid her, and here's her little head in the water, and I was panicking because I was too far away, it was just, I don't know, I feel like Mrs. Kravitz at the beach, I do, I just, safety, safety, but, yeah.
Like, if you buy a boat, you should just figure that part out, where you're supposed to launch it.
Yeah, but no, I had, I had this, they were carrying some kind of a boat, and they were headed over to the beach area, not the launch, and my husband and I were walking up, and I said, oh, it's that way, the launch is over there, and he said, he had his family, and he said, no, I want to launch over there, and I was like, okay, sure, what do I say?
And if it's, you know, uh, if it's something like, you know, a small catamaran that's non-powered and things like that, that people probably will try to do that, you know, again, they probably shouldn't, so.
Yeah, it's the little ones that you worry about.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
It gets busy there.
All right, sorry.
All right, that's okay.
Curious.
Okay, let's get to the preemption bill that was passed, um, this year. So, here's what it says, and you can't really do anything about it. I hate that, but it is what it is. So local governments are required to allow affordable housing on, and this was actually changed from last year, because it used to read residential, and people went absolutely bananas, so it was amended to read commercial, industrial, or mixed use, and it has to be a rental project, so that's, it's not a for-sale project, and it has to have at least forty percent affordable units, so at least that and thirty years, so at least that's limiting really to the li-tech projects, and you're not gonna get many of those. The problem, and what's making planners kind of freak out a little bit, is that it doesn't have to be consistent with your comp plan, and it doesn't have to be consistent with some of your zoning, um, and it can't go to a board, it has to be approved by staff, which, you know, it is what it is. So, and then height, this is a bigger deal, deal for places like Tampa, um, so it has to be the highest, the highest allowed height for a commercial residential project within a mile of the proposed project, or three stories, that, height's not so much of an issue for you, this is a huge issue for Tampa, because they're really in the downtown, and like Channel District, it's regulated by FAA, and that's it, so, they're kind of freaking out a little bit. Density is the highest allowed in your comprehensive plan, still not a, a big deal for you all. The thing that we all were talking amongst ourselves last week was the, um, the working waterfronts, so if you kind of wanted to keep those things out of, um, your industrial areas that are along the waterfront, we can take a look at doing some kind of waterfronts overlay for you as part of this process, and that might give you some comfort there, although I still, you know, again, the li-tech projects have to be with an X amount of transit in a grocery store and blah, 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 so, it's questionable whether it, this is gonna be a big deal for you all, and I think it's gonna be a bigger deal for places like the city of Tampa, and maybe Clearwater, and Saint, particularly Saint Pete.
But some of the, some of the, the height issue could come into play with, because of that mild distance, so, and it's, it's, um, what I'm unclear about is, so on US nineteen, for certain types of uses, we have a height allowance up to seventy feet, so if an affordable housing project is within one mile of that HB zoning, uh, you know, highway business zoning, and a mile's quite a ways on our map, so now you could end up with a project that by right is looking at seventy feet in the height, and, you know, on a small parcel of land, and, I mean, so, I mean, there, there are ramifications of this, and we just don't know what it's gonna, and, and we have to administratively approve them, so, that's where, it's, it's a real, it's an interesting piece of legislation, to say the least.
Whether it'll come up or not, there are definitely some places on the north side of the river that this could come into play, and, and could be a-
We're already getting phone calls on certain properties, so, and I, and I don't know, um, I don't know, Regina, if you have any, uh, input on this, or if we've already, maybe we've even already talked to you, so, specifically for affordable housing, we have the fifty percent bonus density for an affordable housing, do we automatically have to, you know, provide that, so, okay, twenty-two units to the acre, you know, in some areas the seventy-foot height limit, and, you know, have at it, I don't, you know, so it's a, we have some properties that are vulnerable, you know, to, to this being taken advantage of.
I think you can a- address this before it's really gonna affect you significantly, though.
How would you address it?
Well, we need some clarification on the density bonus thing, for sure, like, I, I think that could go either way, I, I don't, I'm not su, we need some guidance or glitch build come from the state on that, what's your highest density, remind me?
Fifteen by right, twenty-two for-
Hang on a second, let's do some math.
Twenty-two is the fifty percent.
Renee, is there anything in the works right now for any develop?
I mean, we've, we've gotten just phone call inquiries about, about properties, the, you know, the, the ones that have kind of been in play for quite a while, that just, you know, projects haven't happened on them because of, you know, for what, for whatever reason, either, you know, it's not enough density, or they want to do X, or there's required mixed use and things like that, so.
I mean, you'd have to have at least four acres to four to five acres, I think, for a project to pencil out.
And we've got, we've got some of those.
And again, it's the forty percent affordable, affordable, like, the market rate guys aren't gonna do it, it just literally doesn't pencil out, like, we did this whole density bonus thing for Hillsborough County, and literally did a pro forma, and it, it doesn't pencil out for the market rate guys, it just doesn't, it's the afford, the folks that do just affordable is where this is, and I think that's probably who this was, uh, lobbying from, because you can tell from the changes that were made from last year to this year, you know, those guys were probably lobbying hard for this, there's another, I, there's one more slide on this. It says you have to consider reduced parking, there we go with the, with the hazy language, you can consider something, I thought about it, and I said, no, uh, it just says consider, and then what's also not defined is located with one-half mile of a major transit stop, what's a major transit stop? What's a minor transit stop? As defined in your land development code, so you would have to put, you would have to put that in your LDC, so that's something to think about. More fuzzy language, state and local governments shall provide incentives to encourage, hate that word, cheerleader, like, who knows, encourage private sector to the primary delivery vehicle for development of affordable housing, well, that's how the state funding works anyway, and it's, encourages you, again, I hate that word, but it says you can do density bonuses, that's one of your incentives that you can do, which you already do, um, you, if you get ship money, you're required to, um, have a list of surplus properties that's appropriate for affordable housing, you all don't get that funding, you don't qualify yet, you gotta hit fifty thousand people, so you don't have to really worry about that, but it is an incentive, um, we did that in Bradenton, sold it below market, and actually a market rate guy was able to do like a little Cotters Court situation and sell it to teachers in Manatee County, that was kind of cool, um, flexible zoning, high density, and ADUs, that's, and tiny homes, um, so those are other incentives that, that you can do and don't have to do.
I'd like to see that.
I think I consolidated, though, I don't think I put on another slide, I popped it up, yeah.
Cool.
So that's the preemptive stuff that was adopted this year, there'll be another one next year.
Just to clarify, that's just in land use, the preemptive stuff just in land use.
Yeah, yes, yes, sorry, yes, right, right.
So, um, we've talked, we've hit on a little bit of, you know, we spent most of our time, I think, on future land use, um, I guess I'm just gonna defer to, to you guys right now as to how y'all, do y'all want to, we'll go ahead and get the other elements out to you this week. I guess I'm just going to defer to, to you guys right now as to how y'all, do y'all want to, we'll go ahead and get the other elements out to you this week. We'll reconvene at the same time next Monday. Is there a preferred way that you want to pick this apart? You know, do we need to take a different approach in terms of how we discuss these things? Or do you want, maybe since you'll have the opportunity between now and then to do maybe a deeper dive, you know, read the, read the clean and then go to the strike the wonder line? Find your big questions and like, what happened to this if we haven't, you know, and, you know, nail us on that, and we'll, and then, and then I think come back maybe for that third review a little bit later, once we can address some of those questions and see if we've, if we've resolved things. I think we've got some direction on kind of that legacy issue, or, you know, or taking the same approach that once X occurs, then we can, you know, so I think, I think we can get there, we'll put some thought into that between now and next week, and maybe try to pull one as an example and write what, what that, what it might look like in, in lieu. So, I mean, I, but we've got, I don't know how late you guys wanted to go tonight, I'm not sure what your tolerance for pain is, so.
We can cover it, but if, if, do we have like a, a specific number of the ordinances that we should get on our next agenda? Is it?
Oh, that.
Other priorities?
Huh, I'm still.
The ones that need, that haven't been incorporated yet. So like the areas for, that you've identified where it has those shoulds and those things that need to be incorporated into the land development code.
Okay, so that, that list.
And if there are, some of them, it sounds like they're already in the land, so we don't even have to, so that would just, then those are eliminated.
We'll, we'll take, we'll start with the future land use element, since that's where the, kind of the rubber meets the road on most of this stuff. And we'll take a deeper dive this week on where those things are, we'll try to fill out that table to a better degree. And, and then somehow we'll identify the ones that we think either should be adopt, I think what you're saying, adopted in the land development code prior to, or.
Did you get clear on that letter? Is it not really?
So, yeah, you don't have to have it done, it's just telling them what you're doing, right? So then you have twelve months. So I wouldn't, the, the soonest, yeah, the soonest I would see those coming to you would be in the fall sometime, so August, September time period would be the soonest. A, a lot of that depends, I think, too, on how, how busy your other, your other, your other agendas are.
Yeah. So, I mean, this is.
So are there going to be some of those specific in the, in the next meeting too? So maybe if those are identified, like highlighted, like the priority ones, maybe highlight them, so we know which ones have to be fixed first.
Yeah, you're talking about the state statute changes that need to take place, got it. We can, we can at least highlight those in a color or something and, and try to get that back out too, yeah, definitely.
We can focus on those on the, yeah.
What's the, this is a somewhat related question. We're coming into the vacation times, summer. So is this considered, like the planning and zoning where we're voting on something and this has to be, you have to be in person? You can't call in for?
Correct.
You can't, so this.
So.
No, you can't attend via Zoom.
Exactly.
If that's what you want.
You need to have the physical in-person quorum.
Okay.
And, and to participate, you need to be there for it.
Someday we'll have to check, let the laws change that for some reason. It worked for COVID, gee, amazing, if, if you get a disease, then it, it works.
Well, they, there was an executive order of the governor
Yeah, I know.
that specifically allowed, you know, for us to not have that in-person physical quorum, so.
I mean, it's, it's kind of interesting.
But the wheels of justice didn't stop. The wheels of government didn't stop as a result.
Continued.
And it, and it actually worked more efficiently than, so that's why I, I don't understand it.
Across the board, we have seen better participation from the public, at least, with virtual, for sure. And people are able to attend meetings virtually and being able to speak virtually has been pretty great.
And it, and that, I can only speak for myself, that holds true for those that volunteer to do services like this.
Sure.
Virtually, I mean, I don't mind sitting in Greece and doing it.
You don't have to be said to coming in person and speaking your mind and sitting behind your computer and saying a lot of stuff and then just closing your computer stuff. I prefer in person.
Both should work.
We might not get mad at you, though, if you have a beach in the background.
No, it'll be late.
That's why you changed it back.
We'll see everybody next week. Do we need to do a formal adjournment, or?
Yes.
Did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I was, that was.
Oh, okay, all right.
Thank you for your dedication.
Thank you.